All right. Good evening, everyone. This is a public meeting of the School Board of West Bend Joint School District Number One. More than 24 hours in advance of the meeting. Notice of the time, place, date, and subject matter of this meeting was posted at the entrance doors of the Education Service Center and at the West Bend Community Memorial Library. A copy was also sent to the Daily News, WIBD, Milwaukee Journal Sentinel, and other media sources that have requested notice of our meetings and ask our superintendent to confirm that this meeting was properly posted.
Yes, it was.
Great. Thank you. I invite you to join me as I rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, everyone. For the recording, it is Monday, January 10, 2022, and this is our first meeting in 2022, so welcome to the new year, and thank you, everyone, for coming and for joining us. Next on our agenda is the approval of the agenda, which was provided in advance. I would move to approve the agenda. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Paul. Motion and second to approve the agenda. Any final discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. The motion carries. We're on to our student reports, and we have our two students here, Raymond Spores and Alexis Gugliotti. How about we start with Alexis this morning? Welcome this evening. Welcome to the podium. And thank you for joining us on a chilly winter night.
All right. My name's Alexis. I am a senior at East High School. Since the last board meeting, there have been many things going on within the student body. For athletics, both the boys and girls, West Bend's ski team took first in their meet, beating Whitefish Bay, Economowalk, Kettle Moraine, and Small School Co-op. Marcus Britis from East took first place. The snowboarding team has also had a successful weekend, placing second for both the boys and the girls division. Not only have our downhill sports been working hard, but so have the Ice Bears, our boys' hockey team. They recently had a big win against Muskego on both the JV and varsity level. As of right now, after lots of hard work, our boys' basketball team ranks number four for the North Shore Conference, with their overall record for the season being seven and four. The girls have also been working very hard, ranking number seven in the conference. East Gymnastics took third place at the Homestead Invitational last week. Swim had another great meet. Their trio of divers, Jan Lancer, Austin Barco, and Ryan Meyer, each broke their personal records and placed first, second, and third respectively. Jan is currently the top diver for Division One in the state. Overall, the team placed seventh at the meet. And for wrestling, they attended the 18-team Sock Prairie Invite and finished in second. Liam Mouski helped lead them to victory, placing first, and is one of the five to make it to the finals. Not only have our sports been very busy working hard, but so have our clubs. To start off, our 2022 Pro Start Culinary Competition Team of Five will represent our high schools at the Wisconsin Pro Start Culinary Competition at the Madison Area Technical College on March 15. Student Council has also been busy planning for the upcoming charity dance. Details are still being decided, but it is rumored that the week of the dance will be similar to homecoming week with dress-up days that will lead up to the dance. Exam week started today, and students have been working hard to be prepared. The graduation committee has also been busy planning graduation for our seniors, who are busy applying for scholarships and getting their grounds. ACTs are also approaching, and the juniors have been preparing themselves for this important test, using tools given to them throughout the school, online, and more. Thank you.
Thank you for the update. Appreciate it. All right. And Raymond, good evening. Welcome.
Good evening and Happy New Year. This week, students at West Bend West will be taking exams to wrap up the first semester, so good luck to all students taking semester exams this week. Last Thursday, not only did the Ice Bears beat Muskego, but they also beat Arrowhead three to one for the first time in program history, so way to go, Ice Bears. This Saturday, the West Bend Debate Team had five debaters qualify for the NCFL Grand National Debate Tournament. This tournament is currently set to take place in person in Washington, DC this Memorial Day. So next week, and the debate team will be competing at the WDCA State Debate Tournament, so good luck to the debaters. Current West Spartan Courtney Rumel is currently competing in international competition, vying for a chance to represent Team USA at the 2022 Winter Olympics in Beijing. After a strong finish at Copper Mountain, there's a chance Courtney could qualify for the Olympics in slope-style snowboarding. Channel 58 ran a story about Courtney this past weekend on her quest to earn a spot on the Olympic team. Recently, Channel 58 also interviewed Ms. Hoyer and Mr. Schloss as part of their school bulletin feature. The story highlighted the nifty nibble as a classroom that gives real-world training to students in short-order cooking, catering, and higher-level cuisine. The piece, which aired on TV this past weekend, can also be viewed on the Channel 58 website. Special thanks to West students Ava Kahoot, Addison Harder, and Lacey Justman for contributing video to this story, as well as Mr. Bentall for his technical assistance. Last Monday, former West Valedictorian and 1998 graduate Kate Dieters appeared on Jeopardy, so that was interesting. You can see clips of that online. Also, lastly, Mr. Schloss and Chad Kilton from Justin's met with all East and West students last Wednesday during the resource period to discuss graduation and ordering items for ceremony and graduation celebrations. Each senior received a package from Justin's with directions on ordering those supplies, and a letter was also sent out by Mr. Schloss and Mr. Groff to all seniors regarding information about graduation. So just a reminder, those Justin's order forms are due early next week to Chad Kilton, who'll be at the high school. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. We appreciate you keeping us connected to what's going on in our schools, so thank you very much. All right. Next on our agenda is public participation. I've not received any comment cards for people wishing to participate in public participation. Is there anyone with a card who wishes to come forward at this time? All right. Seeing none, we will move on then to our consent agenda. And the consent agenda consists of minutes of the December 13, 2021 regular board meeting and executive session, dispersments posted to January 10, 2022, we have ratification of five certified staff contracts, no resignations, and three retirements.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the consent agenda. Any final discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. The motion carries. We're on to reports, and we have our financial audit report, and Mr. Andy Sarno will be walking us through that, and I believe we have also a guest from CLA, correct?
We do. Thank you for this time this evening. As I reported during the budget calendar last meeting, the actual budget itself, where it's 12 months of activity, we plan ahead of time, and then we wrap up with the audit. So this is really the culmination tonight of that financial report, what took place. And above and beyond that, Mr. Grunwald and his team, I mean, they look at policies and procedures and even practices and compliance. They dig into some special areas where we have a certain amount of financial activity just to make sure that we're in compliance, particularly with some federal activity. But so I have Brian Grunwald here. He's a principal. He's with Clifton Larson Allen. I will hand it over to him for a while. I will step up. I'll sit close by in case we need anything. He's going to go through a brief presentation. I do, after his presentation, I've got one more piece of item. This is for discussion only. We'll be bringing this back to formally accept the audited documents. But again, for discussion only, I have some fund balance designations for discussion tonight, where we would be formally acting on that to designate certain dollar amounts in different areas within our general fund and other funds. So, Brian, please.
All right. Well, thank you for the time this evening. And before I get started, I do want to thank Andy and your team for the cooperation and assistance that we received throughout the audit process. The audit process is always challenging, and when you throw things like COVID into the mix, it certainly does add a layer of complexity, both from the district's perspective as well as ours. So I do want to thank your team for that cooperation and assistance throughout the process. In terms of the audit documents, you should have received a copy of the annual financial statements, as well as a letter that I'm going to refer to as an executive audit summary. For purposes of tonight's discussion, I pulled some information from both those documents into the PowerPoint format, but certainly if you have questions on either of the documents, please feel free to ask. Okay. That being said, I just wanted to step back and talk about responsibilities with regards to the audit process. And just as a reminder, management is responsible for the preparation and the fair presentation of the financial statements. They are also responsible for the internal control structure of the district, essentially how things are done, how they handle cash, how they pay their bills, those policies and procedures and things that Andy referred to. Those are all the responsibility of the district. Our responsibility is really to step in and issue and express an opinion on your financial statements. We've done that. I'll talk more about that on the next slide. To do that, we perform tests and procedures, review policies and procedures. And the last bullet point here I do want to highlight is, from an internal control perspective, we do consider the organization's internal controls perspective. We do not issue an opinion on your internal control structure. We just use that for planning purposes. Okay. That being said, I just want to step back and give you a summary of the different audit results. There's actually three reports that are included within your annual financial statements. The first one is considered the auditor's report on the basic financial statements. That's considered to be an unmodified opinion that I would consider as clean or positive. Essentially means that I believe that your financial statements are complete and accurate and in accordance with our professional standards. It is also the highest level of assurance that you can receive as part of the audit process. In addition, again, we also consider the organization's internal control structure. There's a separate report on that. That does discuss and disclose to what I'm referred to as findings, Findings 2021-1, Preparation of the Annual Financial Report, as well as Finding 2021-2, Segregation of Duties. Both of those items are repeat items. There is additional information included in your annual financial statements on pages 83 and 84, and there is also some additional information and discussion within the executive audit summary. To give you a high-level overview of that, the comment related to the preparation of the annual financial statements, again, as I mentioned earlier, those statements are your responsibility. As a non-audit service, we do prepare your financial statements. I would consider that to be an efficiency aspect and extremely common in today's environment. So more of a disclosure that we are the ones who are preparing that statement. From a segregation of duty standpoint, again, we do consider how things are done. We consider the organization's internal control structure. I think as a board, it's still important for you to understand that, from an internal control standpoint, just be aware of the organization's internal control structure and be aware that there was some comments or a comment issued with regards to that. I will say and do want to highlight that as part of my discussions with Andy and your team, they have been extremely proactive in trying to understand that, and I would describe it as trying to be as effective as possible, given the resources and the constraints that you have within the department.
Frank, can I just interject? I think we talk about this pretty much every year.
Exactly.
But could you just opine for us that would these be unusual findings in other districts? Is this...
No, they are very common. The preparation of the financial statements, I think, is, I mean, every school district that I work with, we are the ones who are also preparing the financial statements. From an internal control standpoint, again, I think you just need to be aware that the board plays a role in that, and it's important to be involved and understand that condition. So extremely common, and again, repeat items. I should highlight, there were comments and findings included in last year's financial statements and the 2020 statements that have been resolved. And there's additional discussion on that in the documents, too, but things like, we talked about material audit adjustments and some things relative to compliance, procurement, suspension, and barment, those things have been resolved, so you're definitely moving in the right direction.
Thank you.
And then the last item there, just focusing on compliance. Again, this deals specifically with federal and state aid. Here, we do issue an opinion, and from a compliance standpoint, no issues, no concerns, and that is considered to be an unmodified opinion. Okay, then this slide, I just wanted to step back and focus. Within the executive audit summary, there is a document that's labeled as formal required communications. I would describe this as language that, again, you have seen in the past. It is very standardized. This slide just gives you a summary and a bullet point list of some of the topics that are included there. Again, very standard, talks about things like accounting practices and estimates and financial statement disclosures, so it does seem rather technical. I would describe that as certainly nothing unusual, no red flags, nothing that I would consider to be an issue or a concern. I just wanted to point this out and give you a recap of what's included within that letter, and certainly if you have any questions or concerns, I'd be more than happy to talk about any of those comments further. Then I just wanted to move briefly into what I'm going to refer to as the single audit. This is really focusing on your federal and state aid. From an audit standpoint, we do evaluate different programs. We go through a risk assessment process. We identify and select different federal and state programs to go through and test. I just wanted to give you some perspective on that, so I referenced some of the dollar amounts within this slide, and I've also listed some of the specific programs that we've looked at. Again, to give you some perspective, from a federal standpoint, you've received and recognized approximately $6.7 million worth of federal funds. We've tested approximately $4 million of those funds, so again, we don't test everything. We don't test every program. I have listed the programs that we have tested there, and I just want to highlight, just from a compliance standpoint, the reference to ESER. That's the elementary and secondary emergency relief funding. Because it is something that is new, it's different, it was pushed out as part of the stimulus package, we did step in and make sure that we wanted to take a closer look at that program, again, because it's new and something that you hadn't dealt with in the past. And then on the state side, received approximately $39.3 million in state funds. We've tested approximately 33.8. And again, you can see the programs that are listed there. And again, I just wanted to give you perspective. As I mentioned earlier, no issues with regards to concern with regards to compliance. You're doing exactly what you're expected to do. Okay, then I just wanted to move into some slides with financial information. First off, I wanted to focus on general fund and fund balance. This slide just gives you some history. You can see your overall balances as you work across the slide and see the balances. You'll also see the different categories at the bottom of the slide. I think the highlight is if you look at 2020, you were at approximately $15.7 million in total fund balance. Your fund balance did increase just over $2 million during the current fiscal year, up to an ending balance of 17.8 in terms of your total fund balance within your general fund. If you break that down and look at the individual categories there, I think the highlight is the unassigned fund balance. And if you work across the slide, you can see your history of the unassigned balances. And again, 2020, having approximately $9.3 million in unassigned fund balance, moving up to 11.2 in terms of what's presented in your audited financial statements. And I know Andy wants to come back and circle that on that topic again, but this is just in terms of what's presented within your audited financial statements. Again, just want to point out the increase both in your overall fund balance and your unassigned fund balance. Yep.
All right. I have a question. Could you explain non-spendable?
So there's a governmental accounting standard that defines certain categories of fund balance. Non-spendable is one of those terms. I would describe it as resources that have been set aside for specific purposes that are non-spendable by definition. What it really comes down to is there's some prepaid expenses, some bills that you paid prior to June 30th that are considered non-spendable because you've already spent those dollars. So it's defined by our profession, but it's really more of a timing issue.
And they were spent according to the requirements of what they were given for?
Right, right, exactly. It's just the timing of when you paid a bill.
We didn't have flexibility for how we spent it. It was predetermined.
I don't know what it was offhand, but usually it's things like, if you have a maintenance contract or a computer contract where you might be paying upfront for a service over a certain period of time, well, we expense that from accounting standpoint as you use that service, even though you may have paid for it upfront.
Got it.
So more time.
Thank you.
Good question. And there is additional information in the financial statements on pages 49 to 51. Just wanted to highlight that. Any other questions on that before I move on?
I may can just generally talk about this. Andy talks about this from time to time at our request. We talk about fund balance, and a district of our size, can you just give a general opinion on, do you think that's an appropriate fund balance? It's too much? It's not enough? Maybe you can talk a little bit about why fund balance is important and what the effects are.
Fund balance is extremely important because of timing, first of all. So when we talk about fund balance and unassigned, we might talk about things like working capital or cash flow. From a timing standpoint, as the district moves through the year, there's certain regulatory processes that happen. For example, when you go through your tax levy, you get tax levy dollars in January, February, and August. That happens every year. From an aid standpoint, there's certain timing requirements that you have to go through with regards to when certain state aid payments are made. So it's important to have fund balance from a timing standpoint so that you get through those periods of time when they're not making aid payments. So typically, a low point is typically in December, when your cash balance is the lowest. So it's important to understand that you need fund balance to get you through those low points in time when you have lower cash balances.
So Andy, in the past, we've talked about approving, you know, a short-term borrowing contract, and we've not done that this fiscal year, in part because our fund balance is sufficient to float ourselves through. Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Lastly, I think you also mentioned, correct me if I'm wrong, that fund balance is something that's utilized when we have our bond rating, which indicates what type of interest we would be charged.
Exactly, exactly.
Okay.
And yeah, I think it's extremely important to maintain adequate levels of fund balance. I tend to be conservative because of things like those bond ratings, and I also look at it from the perspective of, if you're going to make decisions and do what you think is best, don't spend it just for the sake of spending it. You could spend fund balance if you wanted to get your fund balance down at the end of the year and have these fund balance amounts be lower. I think it's a matter of prioritizing and doing what you want, what you think is best, and at the same time, being conscious of things like your bond rating and your cash flow requirements, so.
Thank you.
Then this next slide does get into how we evaluate fund balance. This is looking at both your unassigned fund balance and your total fund balance for your general fund in comparison to your actual expenditures. So again, just trying to give you some perspective over time. If you look at this, I would say you see overall consistency with a slight increase in 2021 because of that increase in fund balance and that increase in the unassigned dollars that we just talked about on the previous page. If you step back and see where you are from an overall perspective, you can see that your total fund balance increased from 21.9% back in 2017 up to 22.1 at the end of 2021. Any questions or thoughts on that? Then I also just wanted to give you a snapshot of some of your other funds. So this is high level, but it's giving you your debt service funds, your referendum and non-referendum debt service fund are combined. If you look at the balances over time, again, you can see how those have increased from $8.6 million at the end of the previous year, up to $10.7 million at the end of 2021. The next category is focusing on special revenue funds. That includes your food service or your Fund 50, your community service activities, as well as your donation or your Fund 21. You know, again, just focusing on your trends, I think the highlights are, your food service program did increase slightly, up to $593,000. And then I do want to point out with regards to the donation fund or the Fund 21, you can see the fluctuation over time in the increase from 2020 to 2021, up to $911,000. A significant factor in that is the application of a new accounting rule that required you to move your funds that were previously in Fund 60. So the balances in Fund 60, your pupil activity funds, are now included in your Fund 21. So that's approximately $600,000 of the increase in your donation fund. And then lastly, looking at your capital projects, that does include your Fund 46. And again, resources that are set aside are restricted for capital projects. There, too, you can see your history increasing from $5.9 up to $7 million in terms of funds set aside for future capital projects. Any thoughts or questions on that?
So if I may, just a quick question on debt service, because this, I think, is something that took me a while to understand, because I think of, if I have extra money and I want to pay down my mortgage, I just pay down my mortgage, and it reduces my debt. If we want to prepare for paying down debt faster than we would normally do, my understanding is our bond arrangements do not allow us to pay it down faster, only at certain intervals, so we can set aside money for it and restrict it for it, but we can't actually go ahead and pay them right away. Is that sort of kind of how debt service works?
That is very accurate, and when you're going and issuing debt, you're typically going onto the open market and issuing debt and laying out the terms of that debt, meaning specifically, when are you going to make payments of principal and interest? So you're structured and set in those repayment terms versus in your example in your mortgage, if you want to make an extra payment, they will let you pay that down faster. So yeah, there's terms and requirements within those debt agreements. There are dates where debt is callable, but you have to follow those terms. And I think the key from an accounting standpoint is, is when we go through and identify your fund balance, it is within those funds, and it is restricted and tracked and maintained for future repayments. So those dollars are restricted, and you have to use those for that purpose. Very good question. Any other thoughts or questions? Then speaking of debt, I just wanted to give you a snapshot, and within the financial statements, there is a rather extensive footnote that does display debt information. That's on pages 36 and 37 within your financial statements. The purpose of this slide is just to give you a snapshot of your overall debt balances as of the last few fiscal years. And here, too, the highlight, again, if you move from 2020 to 2021, is what happened during those years. And you can see you've repaid principal. You paid approximately $3.7 million of principal during 2021. And here, you can see the ending balances, $24.8 million in terms of outstanding bonds and $1.4 million in terms of outstanding notes. And again, those are your balances as of June 30, 2021, and no new debt was issued during that period.
Andy, is this reflective of the refi, or did that happen after July 31?
The refi was inclusive of these new dollars. So this is all outstanding debt, not including the defeasance or the dollars that we've been setting aside. This is all outstanding debt at this time.
Okay.
So this would reflect the refinance. Principal only, interest included here.
Okay, thank you.
No, just a summary question. So we're talking about 25, almost 26 million in total debt. In the slide before, you have 10 million in saved funds, so you can, is accuracy what we've saved, and we've obligated that to pay down debt, so it's a net debt of about 15 million?
That's accurate.
How I would see it. So, I mean, we've been saving to pay off debt. I just want to just even explain, we're one of the lowest debt in the Washington County area relating to our school district. Slinger has 34 million in debt. Kiwaskam has 28 million in debt. Germantown has 94 million in debt, just in comparison to West Bend being a larger school district. So I'm just happy that we're saving money for debt and we're paying down our debt, especially in our financial challenging times. Seems like, check that box for an A on that category.
Yeah, no, you've, yeah, again, that was the purpose of this, too, so you can see your history and you can see what you have set aside.
And to take that a step further, Kurt, is our district is now valued at $6 billion, which is quite a bit higher than the districts you just named, and so as a percent of our debt to call it value, I don't like to do math in public, but that would be about 1% if I tried to do math in public.
Super impressive.
Yeah. And one of the pieces of information within the financial statements is, there's actually disclosure. From a statutory standpoint, there is a legal limit on how much debt you can have, which is based on your equalized value.
Right.
So there is some information in there, but not that I would encourage you to get this high, but you actually could issue 593 million.
So just a point on that, as much as I like to save money like everyone else, it would be an interesting statistic or fact if we could look at what our debt is versus what are our buildings actually valued at, or what type of need do our buildings have? So it's unfortunate that we can't see some kind of statistic that shows, well, maybe the buildings, you know, right now should be valued at, I don't know, 150 million, but because they're in such bad need of repair, many of them, maybe they're only valued at 30 million. So at some point in time, you start to think, hmm, am I biting my nose off to spite my face, although we're saving money, but our buildings are falling apart? So just, you know, food for thought there.
Yeah, and certainly being conscious of, I'm going to call it, your long-term capital plan and what you think your needs are for the next three to five years is extremely, extremely important. And it is very common, when you talk about districts with lower debt versus districts with higher debt, typically the ones with higher debt are the ones that have gone through the process of going through a major remodel or remodeling project. But so timing does affect that, but at the same time, being conscious of where you are in that life cycle and your capital plan is extremely important. So you've been diligent with planning, and if you kind of tie this back also to the balances in your capital projects fund, now that includes your Fund 46. in your capital projects fund, now that includes your Fund 46. I mean, that's a great planning tool in terms of being able to set aside resources. As I mentioned on that previous slide, you've also been setting aside additional sources to help pay for projects when you do decide to do things. So you've got that going for you as well. Okay, so one of the other items that we also like to look at from a long-term perspective is the obligations that the district has with regards to post-employment benefits. So again, there is quite a bit of information within your financial statement footnotes. When you talk about the topic of post-employment benefits, from a liability standpoint, you are required to have an actuary involved and value that benefit. And I just wanted to point out, from a valuation standpoint, and they only do that every other year, in terms of the outstanding actuarial accrued liability, you do have a liability of 9.4 million from the most, from the actuarial study before that, they calculated a liability of 9.9 million. So the liability balance that they calculated did decrease 500,000. And then addition to that, you use the Fund 73 to set aside resources to help pay for that. In terms of the net position or the equity that you've set aside in that fund, at the end of 2021, you had approximately 5.8 million set aside there as well. So just wanted to give you some perspective on that as well.
So Brian, I guess drilling into that a little bit further then, so the 3.6 million shortfall, is that cause for great concern at this time? Cause for concern, or, Andy, we have a plan, we're working towards it, this isn't a surprise, but I guess, you know, how intense is the heat on this one?
I would say too, if you would go back and benchmark and calibrate, and here, I would say do it to districts of similar size, because smaller districts sometimes have different benefit packages. In terms of, you know, I'd say my off-the-cuff answer would be is the fact that your liability balance has come down. I know you've made some changes with regards to the benefit that you've offered within the last several years. A 9.4 million liability is certainly not high in terms of what we see that's out there. And also, again, in regards to the commitment to saving or funding that, the amount of net position that you had at the end of 2020 was 3.7 million, so you did increase from 3.7 million to 5.8. So again, that's taken into consideration as part of your budget process in terms of what you're setting aside. But from what I see, my off-the-cuff answer would be is this is definitely, I mean, you definitely have your arms around that and you're certainly planning for it. I don't know, Andy, if you want to talk about the budgetary aspect of that any further?
I'd be happy to chat in just a little bit when I share some other supplemental information. So Brian's correct, we're headed in the right direction. The liability is coming down, we've been planning for the future. These, the fund balance that exists, the 5.8 million, has been surplus or additional contributions from prior years, where the retirees that are receiving this benefit, we contribute above and beyond that. It's actually a requirement of that biennial, yeah, biennial actuarial study that we complete. But I will share just a little bit of information, but we've made some changes to the plan, we're heading in the right direction, this is good news.
Yeah, and just to assure the public, it's not like this money's going to be called in the next 18 months where, oh my gosh, how are we going to close the gap on it? There's teachers that have 10-plus years left to retirement, so.
Correct.
This isn't.
This really is planning for the future, so we've been, again, we've been, there's expenses every year, we make a contribution that's above and beyond those expenses, and we make sure that we're planning appropriately for that liability.
Okay, thank you.
So that's the end of the financial information, and really, when I step back and think about those topics, those are really the three, I think, primary areas that I like to focus on: fund balance, long-term debt, and then your post-employment benefits. And again, with each of those topics, as we mentioned, you have some positive financial information and you're in strong financial condition. I just wanted to also take a step and talk about looking forward. And again, I know I briefly mentioned COVID. COVID has certainly had a big impact on the district and how they operate, things like food service, transportation, information technology, and how you provide educational services. It has also had a significant impact on the audit side, and I just wanted to provide some assurance that as part of the audit process, we certainly try to make sure that we understand the impact on the audit, things like internal control and how you're doing things and making sure that we're trying to stay up to speed with changes that may be occurring within the district that affect the audit. And I think the primary thing also is then the grant compliance piece. So as I mentioned earlier, we're definitely well aware and focusing on your ESAR funding there. So we'll continue to monitor that as we move into 2022. And then the other item, just, you know, there are additional governmental accounting standards. I just listed one here, there are additional ones. We'll continue to share information and work with Andy and your team to make sure that those are properly implemented as we move forward.
Yeah, just one comment on ESAR funds, because this has come up in the past. I mean, this is a federal program that has provided this school district with a primary emphasis on, because of the pandemic, COVID-related mitigation, and I almost, this is my words, keeping schools open, and the extra expenses, so the federal government provided. And I'm glad to see that it was audited, because there are certain requirements, we can't use it for, but those sources of pandemic-related sources, and we've hired more subs, we've cleaned the buildings more frequently. If I'm thinking of two or three extra elements of just keeping our schools open, staffing's been a big concern from our teachers down to our level, and I just want to commend, I'm glad you audited it, so we're using the funds correctly, and I want to commend the district on keeping the schools open and our use of those funds.
Yeah, absolutely.
More of a comment.
It's created challenges, there are complying, and I think the point is, is that people need to remember is, yes, the federal government pushed out some money, but that isn't free money, you have to follow the compliance requirements and make sure you're following those, and that's exactly why we looked at the program, to try to provide some assurance there. So you are doing the right things in terms of the testing that we performed. So, and that will continue and carry forward into 2022.
Brian, you listed Gatsby 87. I'm assuming that has to do with operating in capital leases, and they're now going to be accounted for differently. To your knowledge, is that a big issue for the district? Not really? Are there other Gaspys out there that you'd say, wow, we really have to, we really have to think about this, it's going to affect your financials?
Are additional governmental accounting standards out there? I think when I think of the applicability of those, this is one that is more applicable. When I think of the impact on the board and your budget process, I don't want to say that it has a significant impact. You always had to understand the commitments that you had and figure out how you're going to repay those commitments and build those in your budget process. Nothing changes from that perspective. It is a little bit bigger deal behind the scenes with some of the work that the district's going to have to go through and we're going to have to go through with accounting and financial statement presentation and footnotes. So it's something that's been talked about for a long time, so it is something that we'll have to work through. Okay, and that's all the information that I had prepared today, but again, I do, in closing, I do want to thank Andy and your team for the cooperation and assistance that we received throughout the process.
Good to see you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your presentation. Andy?
When I think of the leases, we have two copiers, two large copiers at the high school, and that's about it. So being mindful of that, we'll make sure that we work through with Brian and his team, making sure that we do identify, because that's the proper thing, is to document, be in compliance with the requirements of that, so we will make sure that we're on top of that. What I have today, I'm going to make, oh, this is tough. There we go. This is a document I put together, again, it's uploaded into the board docs, it's accessible to the public for discussion only. Top section, these are areas identified as a part of the audit, and as Brian indicated, it's almost a little bit of a chicken and egg type thing, is if he makes his changes based on this, but you haven't taken action on it, how can he include that in the audited financials when we? So this is something that right now, we will make sure that we coordinate, but for discussion, action on the 24th, these are recommended. This was a very similar process, very similar document that was brought forward a year ago. Top section are the general fund, Fund 10, any areas or different classifications of equity or what we call fund balance, non-spendable, and thank you for the discussion earlier on that. That's where we have prepaid expenditures, and again, I don't have the detail as well, but I'd be happy to get that. What did we pay a little bit early, but it was related to probably discounts and other items that we knew we were entering into contracts and services, but it was prepaid. Money has to be reserved, we pay the bill as of July 1st, when the clock strikes midnight, and then, but these have to be classified as being held. Next area is restricted health insurance, so we're self-funded within our, for health and dental insurance. These are dollars that if we had an unhealthy year, there was more expenses than premiums, both on the district and the employee side, so these are reserves just in case that happens. Knock on wood, we've had a couple very healthy years. I think a little bit, a little bit of it could be contributed to COVID, but yet at the same time, we started trending a little bit healthier prior to COVID, so this is still a reflection of that. We're going to be monitoring this because we set health premiums, health insurance, dental insurance premiums in the spring, even though we're on a calendar year, but these are dollars approximately 3.2 million, very similar to last year, because we didn't change the premiums at all. So very similar health insurance and dental insurance reserves. We do have additionally health reimbursement accounts, we offer that in conjunction with our health insurance, and these are dollars that are reserved for that as expenditures come in and as people make claims. We have a Jackson Trust, right now, there's about 1.4 million, there had been about 2.25. We bought land three years ago, so right now, there's 1.5, approximately 1.5. This is where Brian's documents sort of reflects the 2.25. We'll make sure then on that next audit that that gets updated, unless the board wishes to designate additional monies into this. We do as well have a committed turf fund, there hasn't been money contributed in this fund held in reserve, I've been told, I think within about the next several years, few years maybe even, that we're going to have a replacement of that, but these are dollars that are reserved for when that happens. The big piece, and this is the interesting one, so our unassigned, and this is a good thing, as Brian indicated, it's a good thing that our unassigned fund balance has grown approximately 2 million. We currently have a board policy that talks 14 to 18%, but one of the things that we heard this summer is we had our Moody's call with that debt refinancing of 9.2 million for a district, and this was a quote from the report, which is available online, for a district our size, that's not sufficient. So we were a double A negative, which is in the top tier, it's a very solid Moody's rating, but what was indicated is if you want to get to a double A without the negative there, you're going to have to increase your fund balance a little bit. I know that we are assessing all of our board policies, and this is one of them, that's in the 100 series that we can take a look at to discuss, especially in today's environment, and again, with the federal money. But yes, we received, and as a part of this year and next year, we're living on some of those federal dollars, meeting those requirements. The legislature didn't give an increase in the revenue limit for this year as well as next year in this biennial budget, so we got to keep that in mind as well, that those dollars are one-time only. What are we looking at then for that next biennial budget, and how are we going to make sure that we deliver that balanced budget? But these dollars are there for fluctuations, the debt rating agencies, they like to see this healthy, it's a sign of health. Something happens, do a large expenditure that was unbudgeted, this is there as a little bit of a safety net for one-time expenditure-type things that we need to get done, but very important piece.
Andy, so put a number to getting the double A negative, getting the negative off of there. I got 20 bucks in my wallet, will I get there, or are they talking, you need to go from nine to 15 mil?
Yep, so right now, we're at, I believe we're at 20, 22%. And again, the rating agency indicated that we need to get in excess of 20 to 25%.
Jeez.
Yeah.
Several years ago, we had a board driver where that number was between 16 and 18. And that now, they're asking for it to be 25?
I don't know what the origin, so yeah, the, my guess is the, I'm assuming here, the policy of 14 to 18 was based on some type of document that was received, something that made us believe that we needed that. But yeah, so again, a district our size, and I picked up on those two words, where it might be appropriate to be 14 to 18, or even at 22% for a Campbell Sport or a Slinger, you know, again, based on their debt and whatnot, that's, yeah.
I do think over time, there's been, I'll say, tightening and probably scrutiny from the bond rating agencies' perspective. I hate to say it, but I feel like there's been times where I think they're like nitpicking places to try to drive their ratings a little bit lower.
Sure.
And as a part of that, I mean, we used to say 15 to 25%, so we had a lower, a lower bottom end and a bigger range. I mean, now it has been more common to say 20 to 25, so I think that's a gradual shift over time. And ultimately, I know you guys talked about the short-term borrowing before too, that's always one of the, one of the barometers that I like to look at is, are you short-term borrowing? Do you want a short-term borrow? There are districts that I work with that say, yeah, we're willing to do it, we're going to keep doing it, because we don't want to have our fund balance be too high. Personally, if you'd ask me where I would want to be, again, I'm naturally conservative, I would say I don't want a short-term borrow and I want to be in the 20 to 25%. And some of that's consistent with what you're hearing from rating agencies.
And Andy, if we would have been a double A versus double A negative, what's the material difference on the interest rate that we would have gotten the bonds for?
Yeah, so you're asking me to go back to July in my brain.
Sorry.
And I did the math, Mr. Ongert, and we're actually at a debt ratio of 0.41, and then we did defuse a little bit of addition, we were making a $3 million.
I don't do math in public.
That, I didn't, I sat on the side with my calculator. Yeah, we made a $3 million payment this year, we defused another five, we're actually going to be sitting at about a 0.25 after this year, which is low. But this year was tough, because we're, and I'm going to make this up, so who's ever listening can't hold me to this, we're at like a 0.41 with a double A negative, and if we would have been at a double A, it would have been a 0.39. It would have been three basis points that over the life, the eight years of this remaining life, it would have been 256 bucks or something like that.
Yeah.
At that time, I actually did the math, it was less, it was less than a couple thousand dollars for 9.25 million over eight years.
And what we would have had to do to get there was another 3 million or so, and it just, trade-offs, it doesn't seem to make a whole lot of sense to me.
Because one of the things that they found very favorable, we have a lot going on in our communities, there's a lot going on in Jackson, there's a lot going on in West Bend, we've got some great economic things going on, and all of those are individual variables. We spoke about it at that time, but this was one of the hangups, so, yeah. Much like as well, you know, we don't know what our widget production cycle is going to be five, eight years from now, that was the other thing too, is what is the favorable, how much can we plan ahead financially to make sure that we're still fiscally solvent? So between those two are the big, big pieces.
Great, thank you.
But likewise though, they are going, the interest rates continue to creep up, I know that there are going to be a couple interest hikes this year, and timing is almost of the essence, so as we look at that outstanding debt, what's happening to interest rates, what happens with our project needs, a lot of that's all going to come together and we'll... Thank you. Again, top half, general fund, bottom half, debt service, so again, about 10.7 million is being held right now, so out of that 25 million, and again, this is principal only, these are dollars only that can be applied to both principal as well as interest over the next seven years. Very healthy, we've been able to do that, we're being fiscally responsible in relation to the, what we were asked as a part of the April of 2019 referendum. Food service, Brian indicated Abby and her team in nutrition were able to grow their fund balance, part of this was due to the USDA free meal that happened last year as well as this year. Wasn't able to spend money, we couldn't order equipment, we couldn't find staff, so part of that is here, but a stable budget for the current year, but we do have those reserves well within the DPI, Department of Public Instruction, requirements, they do have a cap that they like to see in there. Our community services fund, this is the only negative dollar amount, but it was purposeful and strategic. It is nice to have a little bit of fund balance within our community services fund, but yet at the same time, ours was too large a few years ago, so we've been slowly under-leaving in this area, spending that slightly and bridging that out over several years. Student activity fund, in fact, that was, was that Gatsby 84, Brian?
Right.
Gatsby 84, Governmental Accounting Standards Board 84, that said you have to bring all those student fundraisers, everything from a bake sale to a donation, bring that into our books, and that's what we did very successfully, there's still districts that haven't done that, but we did it very seamlessly, and it's been a benefit, but this just reflects all of that change that took place over this last year. Capital projects, this is our Fund 41, Fund 4, please, question? Oh, okay. Fund 41, Fund 46, Fund 49, so Barton Money, and then the two, two reserve accounts. We have been growing this, I think we've been waiting to make sure that we do this in a strategic manner, the $7 million that's sitting there, I don't want to steal Mr. Otis' thunder, but he may be presenting... be presenting something for, and momentarily where maybe we need to take on another project to start doing something strategic at a building. And then the final one is our post-employment benefit. We've been able to grow this. It did grow by about $2 million from 3.8 to 5.8 million dollars this last year. We're planning for the future above and beyond, and I don't know how, if I can click over, there we go. Mr. Grunwald indicated, so we, we do have, I think it's right, there we go. This is for current retirees that are still on the district's health insurance. This spring, we will have the first round of retirees eligible to retire with a contribution into a 403B, into a tax sheltered annuity account. The 9.4 million dollars of outstanding liability does not include that. So I need to be very open. That is not the only outstanding liability. Our human resources department has done a very good job in planning and tracking, documenting. There's even been some changes. I know some things were brought to you a few months ago to make sure that we're consistent in, in, with this. But we are in a good position. There's a lot of districts with a larger dollar amount with less saved up. I think we're, we're in a good spot. I don't want to ignore it. I want to make sure that we continue to monitor it, anticipate expenditures accordingly, make sure that we're contributing enough money, but it is there, so.
Did those employees make the contribution themselves and it just funnels through us?
So several years ago, we went from continuing on the district's health insurance and slid over, and monies have not been set aside, but it's a district contribution that will be made instead of continuing on the health insurance. So if the employee wishes to go out onto the marketplace and buy health insurance or even stay on Cobra for the allowed period of time and buy it from the district, they're allowed to do that, but they can also buy a boat.
So it's the, we're spending the same amount of money, but there, it allows the employee choice with what they do with it.
With today's rates, insurance rates, and again, depending on what plan you have, single, single and spouse, family, we offer four different plans. On average, the change that we made is less expensive than the health continuation because people had been continuing on it, but it is still an expenditure. It's a large expenditure that we need to monitor. But district, district paid.
And that's something we're committed to for how long?
I, well, the, the TSA, the 403B contribution is indefinitely unless action were to take place. We are legally bound to the health insurance. Any other questions that Mr. Grunwald or I can answer tonight? Again, this is becoming forward for accepting the audited financials on the 24th, taking action on the fund balance classifications. Anything in between now and then, please let me know. Here to answer any questions if anything pops up.
Any interim questions for Andy? All right. We'll see this as an agenda item on the next agenda, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. Next, we have our superintendent's report. Superintendent Wimmer.
Recently, we had a timeline for applicants to file for candidacy for school board. We had four candidates file, and then we had a poll for ballot placement. So appearing on the ballot for the election on April 5th of 2022 for school board would be John Donaldson, Melanie Ergot, Paul Fisher, and Erin Dove. So I just wanted to say thank you to all the candidates for their willingness to serve. So thank you to them for filing and, and with that commitment. I think at top of everyone's mind are the recent changes from CDC, DHS, and public health. You saw that we foreshadowed for our families as we aligned ourselves with those changes. CDC made some changes while we were away at break. We were in communication with our public health. Over that time, they were untangling some pieces from the state level and updating their guidance to us. I noticed and communicated with them today, they were still updating some of their links to some of their graphics and some of their school guidance material, but comfortable after our conversation last Thursday in moving forward. In fact, that's what our public health is advising our families right now. So we made that move right away for our staff, and we forecasted that for our families so they knew and understood what was happening and who would be seen in the classrooms. The largest shifts with that, just want to highlight, is that is shortening a quarantine for a positive case to five days at home and five days, if you're not experiencing symptoms like fever, et cetera, five days coming back wearing a face covering. That's shortening a quarantine of a positive case in your home from 10 days again to five days and returning with a negative test on day six. And then it's choice of quarantine if you're a close contact regardless of phase. So in our previous plan, we would have some phased quarantine recommendations. This would eliminate that piece. So again, we wanted to make a move immediately for staff. We want our staff in those classrooms. And then it's no different than the conversation we had early in December where we wanted those who are healthy to return to our classroom, whether they were learning, teaching, et cetera. We had met prior with our health room staff. Recall that we are one of the few districts who actually have certified health professionals manning our health rooms in addition to our district nurse. We had pre-met, dove into our local data, made some recommendations, what we would like to see. We started forecasting conversations we would have. And then what do you know, CDC kind of aligned themselves to, to what we were seeing. So certainly, we weren't the only ones seeing that. And we're looking for alignment in our student practice as well. I wanted to just have a conversation with the board before we made movement to that. It would just shift that mitigation. And then instead of our phase planning having something to do with quarantine, it would just more clearly state like, this is what a classroom looks like in those phases. We certainly would have intermittent masking if we were seeing high illness with those phases. But again, this would be more of an umbrella to shift quarantine, to impact both students and staff. So we're looking for that change. When we worked with our health room staff, our internal team around making that shift, we're ready to go tomorrow for students, ready to make calls to get our students back who are eligible. So just hang on until we call you. I'll, I'll certainly notice our parents after our conversation in case there's any pieces we need to clean up based on your feedback. But wait until we call you, we'll alert you right away to a new date. But our, our health room staff is, is ready to go. And again, public health certainly has already transitioned. This is the advice that they would give as well. And I think some people are wondering, okay, if that were to change, what's, what's the same, what stays? If you're sick, stay home. I, I, I sound like a broken record, but please do so. Whether you're a student, whether you're a staff member, if you're sick, stay home. Whether it's COVID, whether it's you've got a fever, you've thrown up sometime in the night, please stay home. I beg of you. If you are pending test results, you should still stay home. If you have a positive case for yourself or someone in your household in that close proximity, we would have that period of quarantine, again, cut, cut right in half. We are committed to continuing communication to our families if you've been exposed to a positive case. Right now, we're coming around the logistics of that. If you're a student with a secondary schedule and you're seeing five different teachers, if you're a family with more than one child, the last thing we want is for you to be inundated with 10 messages a day that your child was exposed to COVID. We're working with our technology department and kind of working through notification, how we can make that one notification to look at that. But we're still committed to making sure that you're informed. And whether you're a staff member or you're a family, just making sure that you're informed of that. Our plan would still call for intermittent masking again to align to public health, CDC, DHS. It's if you're returning early at that five-day mark, we ask that you would wear a mask for the, the five days that you return. And again, that might fall on a weekend. All of our health room staff will help you to know, they'll, they'll talk that through with you around what that looks like. So again, and if we were to jump in phases, you know, that three, four mark, we, we start the use of intermittent masking depending on what we're seeing as far as illness. Again, still giving families choice, making sure we're communicating with people and giving them the option of quarantine if they would choose and making sure that there's some learning accessible through distance learning for our students if they, they need that. And again, that you wouldn't need to quarantine if you've had a lab verified case of COVID in the last 90 days. So there's a lot not changing, but it really clearly cut that quarantine, which is something we wanted. We wanted to get our kids, especially our healthy kids and staff, back in the classrooms and return them to the classrooms as soon as possible. Are there any questions on kind of those changes? Any concerns if, or anything from your perspectives that we need to attend to before we implement on behalf of our students?
Not really a concern for the students, but I don't know how many kids we currently have who are quarantined. But I mean, obviously, if I'm a student at home, and, and this has now been cut in half for me, that might make the difference of me competing in a sport this week versus not. So I guess I want to make sure that we're staffed up enough to contact all those people in a timely fashion so that by tomorrow morning or tomorrow afternoon, they know like, woo-hoo, I'm back on the basketball team or whatever.
Just a, just a commendation to our health room staff. We talked with them Friday. The district nurse convened them and worked through, and we posed, if you need a few days, if you need this for this transition, and they said, no, we're ready now. Do it, do it as fast as you can, and, and we'll wrap around and support them so that we can do that. So thank you to them.
Yeah. I mean, I'm definitely in favor of doing this immediately to get our kids back and to stop the nonsense with these exposed, long-term, sit-at-home-again kind of things. So totally in favor of that. Just want to make sure that, you know, our staff is able to have the time to do that, which it sounds like you've got a great plan. So I say, let's move forward instantly.
And like I said, we'll continue, you know, just hearing feedback going through around the communication so that you're not feeling inundated. We're, you know, working with our director of technology and our team around what that looks like, different perspectives from families so that we can try and clean up that piece. And I think the second piece that I always get is what does the crystal ball say? You know, if you're looking at maybe other states or countries that seem to be experiencing the new variant, the new variant appears in data to come upon places swiftly, appears to be almost more transmissible, but thankfully, it's not resulting in the, the death, hospitalizations, et cetera, that the other variant was having. So everyone always asks me about, so what if? I haven't seen a spike of that arrival here in our local data. I would anticipate our numbers might go up, you know, as that kind of comes into the area more. But right now, we've been working with, I've been meeting with individual principals and just thinking about how to do things different to avoid any kind of closure. So prepping for, and this would be a worst-case scenario, I'm not saying this is coming or anything like that, but if we had 50% of our staff out, what does that look like if I were had to shift to maybe distance learning onsite? Maybe their teacher's patching in and I have supervisors in place? And where's my next layer of supervisors to that school? What if I have 50% of my class out and I'm a teacher? And it, and it's difficult to live in those both worlds and provide any kind of synchronous instruction to half your class while half is in front of you? How might we, you know, re-combobulate some cohorts or classes? How might they work as a team differently? Let's say Mr. Ongert and I were third grade partners and you know what? We both got a significant amount of kids out. I'm going to take virtually, you're going to take face-to-face, you're going to do that. How could we redo that to, should we see any kind of really large spike that we're ready and that we have options for families? We really deconstructed Silverbrook around what we could do because we had to close for a period of days, and it, it just pained us to not have options. That's something that we've prided ourselves on is to create avenues of choice for our families and our staff and avenues of support. And we want to be here if they need us in some form or fashion. So like I said, we are making sure we're in advance prepared for that should it occur. Hopefully, it does not, but I, I get that crystal ball question quite a bit based on that. And I also, in, in that, you know, when people ask me, what does that crystal ball say? And like, should we be putting masks on right now, everyone? You know, we've got metrics and phases in those pieces for intermittent masking. There's this early return with some, some masking involved. So, you know, that, that's something for discussion. You see other districts going to that. I don't have that recommendation at that time, but I certainly hear from people on, on both sides of that. But again, I think early on, we made some metrics to do that. So I would say we take this next, next step forward with this and, and keep our, our other pieces in place and continue to monitor.
So superintendent, just to, to understand the context, you said we're not seeing that spike in our local data.
I'm seeing certainly an increase. It was funny because I, I clicked on the wrong tab. I get a, a report of school-aged children, and the, the local health has a dashboard up. And I clicked on last year's number and I thought, wow, you know, 65 in all the zip codes I serve, and that's private parochial, all of us. And I'm like, wow, we're really doing good. And then I realized, okay, that was last year, and looked at ours and it was 199. So we're certainly seeing that, but you, when we look at kind of other states or other countries, they talk about a, just a fast and furious spike, almost like how Silverbrook, you know, experienced, all of a sudden, it was just on our doorstep so rapidly. So we've been maintaining our numbers of what we saw kind of prior to break, so.
So local is our district, not Washington Ozaki County numbers?
Right in our classrooms. You can look at our dashboard every day. You certainly see, here's the exact numbers. They're certainly the highest that we've ever seen in there. But thankfully, you know, again, this new variant seems to be, you know, lending itself to more, different symptoms that aren't requiring hospitalizations, those kinds of things. But hospitalizations are also something we track. Sometimes I, I get asked, you know, how do you, how do you come up with this? You know, I, I'm not your health expert, but I facilitate things. So we're looking at CDC, DHS, our local health, and then our local experts. I also work with children's, and we also work regionally. Part of that work is to assess hospital census, they call it, all of those pieces you can see, and you hear about that on the news now, you know, that they're starting to cancel non-elective things, and they're starting to watch, and they're starting to mitigate other operations in that. And again, it's something we stay in tune to. We meet every single week with partners in public health to look locally under the Washington Ozaki Counties as well as then right into our classrooms at our data.
And I, I think our, our focus needs to be as much as we don't want to be masking and be quarantining, but at the same time, as transmissible as this one is, even with the lower hospitalization rates, the denominator is going to be so much larger that whatever we can do to, I'll say specifically, keep staff in the rooms to keep the classrooms open is, is what we got to do to, to control this. Isn't a mortality mitigation play as much as it is a sickness mitigation play.
And, and we're in the, you know, we're in that season of regular cold flu. We're seeing stomach bugs. We're, we're seeing those things. So I, I mean, really, I can't make that plea enough. If you're sick, stay home. Please, please do, because, I mean, we, we kind of hear stories from schools around, oh yeah, I did have that fever and, you know, I gave him some Tylenol and those kinds of things. We respectfully ask that you don't do that. If your child's sick, please keep them home and, and kind of let them get healthy before they return because, again, even if it's not COVID-related, we want everyone to stay healthy so that we can be present.
I just want to piggyback on that. Stay home if you're sick. One of my kids stayed home for a couple of days. She just had a cold and wanted to sleep in and take it easy, but she was still well enough to participate in class. So I just wanted to talk about distance learning, how parents know about it. Are all teachers supposed to be doing it? Because she maybe had two teachers that didn't have Google meets out there, so she had to play catch-up when she got back. So I just wanted to find out what the standard is for that.
It could be that nuance of if she was just out sick a couple of days versus a more robust distance learning program that they have in place for students who are navigating COVID quarantine or maybe a longer-term illness. So if you have any questions, don't hesitate to reach out to your classroom teacher, especially if you know it's going to be a longer-term illness, or your principal to help navigate that. We navigate independent situations all the time. So just, you know, meeting with families, taking care of needs. So again, it, it could be that they were just reading that as a, a simple absence versus an extended absence. So reach out to teachers or principals to ask those questions. And certainly, if you're navigating, again, we're, we're, we're staffed with professionals in our health rooms. So as you try and untangle and what if, they're a great resource as well. So don't hesitate to connect.
So big crystal ball question. Going out, let's, let's say six weeks, we're, we're into the tail end of February. Going out, let's say six weeks, we're into the tail end of February. Hopefully, we're on the downhill, big downhill slide, based on what we've seen elsewhere around the country, world, and so forth. Absence some other variant coming in, would you see, yeah, big knock on wood, would you see the potential to relax our quarantining policy, our contact tracing policy even more, given how this thing presents more like a cold than how Delta did? And again, I know it's impossible to project, because, yeah, in a perfect world, we wouldn't even have this, but trying to give some level of promise that, you know, if things go the way that the numbers are showing, yeah, we'd be open potentially to relaxing and getting back to more of a normal way of living again.
Sure, and I think you saw that we did that, we're really responsive last year. Like you said, when you get into that top of March, April, we started to see it just diminish. That's when we went forward and really worked with public health in advance of the CDC even going from 14 to 10. We showed our data and made that step forward that was monitored by them. We're not adverse to doing that. I think we have that data we need, and I think that we're seeing much higher numbers, but we would make sure that we were declining, that those were in a place that we felt comfortable, that weren't doing those things before we bought, brought a recommendation of that kind forward. And again, like I said, our public health will always work alongside us individually too. So if there was something we did want to try, monitor, et cetera, they've been open to that.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions about this? Then we will send out a communication. I foreshadowed this to families, let them know we are speaking about that tonight, foreshadowed it for staff. We'll, I know the nurses and healthroom staff are watching right now, but we'll send out a communication this evening to just alert to the change and just sit tight till you're notified of that new date. So, I mean, get ready for school tomorrow, kids, but don't come right away until we call you. So we do have other things going on, not just COVID. So there's a couple of other pieces. I know you heard our students talk about and highlight, you can check on our Facebook page, we posted those CBS 58 news stories about the nifty nibble, as well as Courtney Rumel and her pursuit to qualify for the Olympics. Also featured her older brother Cole, who is a 2020 graduate. So just amazing, and makes you really proud, and makes you, you know, have someone to root for. So good luck to her on her quest. When we talk about quarantine, one of the pieces that we started, our HR department was instrumental in, we phased in onsite testing for our staff and their families, just so we could get all the kinks out, if we had any. That's been running smoothly. They reached out through a partnership with DHS. They provide funding, they get you connected with a lab partner. I foreshadowed to families, we will be working to bring up a testing site for our families. So our students and their families would be able to access. So we're just getting in the final stages of location hours. And it's nice because you kind of hear stories. They talk about, you know, kind of getting shorter supply on the Rapids. These would have the other PCR tests. I know the state labs that they would all feed to are experiencing a delay. It's starting to take maybe two, three hours, but our rapid test for our staff have taken, you know, 15 minutes. You have your initial results, and you can return to work, that kind of thing. So we are looking to bring that up, and that's something that's accessible to students and to anyone in their family. So that hopefully will help the burden at Fair Park, which testing is still available there too. So we look forward to sharing that news. And I'd be remiss if I didn't talk about the negative impact that COVID and illness has had on RightWay and our drivers having to be out. Again, perhaps some of these new standards with the CDC will help some of our drivers return, but they've had to combine routes. It's caused timing changes. They're uploading those new routes. We expect them to persist for another week or so. They're uploading that into the app so that routing change is reflected, and we just apologize. We apologize that this is happening, that it's inconvenient, that it happens when it's cold. You know, thanks for your patience and flexibility. I know they want to get everyone back on their staff as well, so I just want to make sure and mention that too. So hope that they're all healthy, hope many can return to work. Perhaps they're aligning to these things too, so. And if not, you know, if anyone's interested in being a bus driver, when I do my radio spot, I, we always kind of laugh back and forth, but, you know, on behalf of our school district, or any school district, whether it's being a bus driver, a regular route, a substitute, substitute lunch service midday for a couple of hours, subbing in any way, shape, or form is appreciated. Every district will have a link. Again, I'm going to want you to come to West Bend first, but anything's appreciated because, you know, we do that all-call in the morning, and we all laugh. I have a change of recess clothes in my office. We wear certain shoes to be present in lunchrooms, and everyone's doing their part because we're really committed to being here. But if anyone has interest or can help just in a short term, please see our school webpage to join our team, even if you can assist for a little bit.
And for those positions, Superintendent, it's not necessarily required that someone has a bachelor's degree in education?
No, certainly no. Many of them are either supervisory in nature. It might be a high school diploma. CDL for your bus drivers. If you're interested in being a bus driver, RightWay will train you and give you all that training for free. But no, there's a whole range. You are, if you have a bachelor's degree, qualified. We can help you get a substitute teaching license so that you're qualified to serve as a sub with a four-year degree. And it doesn't have to be in teaching, it could be in another field of study. So connect with our HR department. They're happy to look for a spot if you just call and say, you know, how can I help? They're happy to help you find a spot to do so. So I appreciate that.
Associates or bachelors?
Oh, associates. Oh, they're widening that and helping us out. Associates or bachelors?
Any questions for our superintendents?
That's all I had.
Thank you for your report.
Thank you.
All right, and we're on to our committee reports. First is Curriculum Committee, and Erin Dove.
Okay. We had Curriculum Committee meeting right here this morning at 8:00 AM. There were a couple things on the agenda. First is the summer school program for 2020. So it was shared what enrollment numbers have looked like the past few years, what dates they're looking at for the summer, and kind of the setup of offering some in-person sessions and virtual as well, both in credit recovery and advancement classes. Next on the agenda was the 5'8" Social Studies Resource Update, and that looked at kind of an overview of two resources that are being looked at for the fifth through eighth grade social studies. Those will be able to be viewed by the public, starting later this week at the Public Library, and then following that, right here at the West Bend Education Service Center. And you can peek for hours on that on the website. And then third is, on the agenda, was the K through eighth grade literacy resource feedback review. And I'm actually just going to leave that for later, because that's on our board agenda tonight. And lastly, we just quickly peeked at the Board Policy 300 Series. The Policy Committee is going to be looking at that upcoming, but the Curriculum Committee is going to review a few of them, because a lot of them fall under curriculum. So we're going to start looking at that, really dig in at our next meeting.
Feel free to tackle those if you want.
That's a long list.
Policy Committee, we have scheduled a meeting for January 25th. We will start looking at the 600 Series fiscal management policies, then the 700 Series support services policies, then back to the 500 Series personnel policies, and then the 300-level instruction policies. The 600, 700, 500 shouldn't take too long. They're not, there's not a ton in there. I will admit, we are a little bit behind on where we should be on our policy review calendar, but the superintendent and I were emailing dates back and forth. I know you were as well, Chris, and so we will be scheduling some sessions to get back on track, and I'm confident we can do that. So just like the Curriculum Committee, our meetings are always posted and public. Anybody can come and watch. There are typically more work sessions as we go through that, and they're always held right here in this room. So January 25th at 4 o'clock is our next one.
Great, thank you, Erin. Thank you, Joel. Any questions for our committee chairs? Thank you for your work. All right, we have one action item on our agenda tonight, market analysis of facilities department positions, and Mr. Lenny Hansen is here to walk us through that. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you very much. I will try to make efficient use of our time around this important topic. As you know, throughout the preceding months, we've been going about the district's now normal process of reviewing employee starting wages on a three-year cycle to ensure good market competitiveness, so we can meet our recruitment and retention goals. We targeted a number of different positions earlier in the year that were especially being watched because of the labor market demands that we saw, the rises in wages and things like that around certain positions. We are now closing out the entire gamut of positions that need to be analyzed for this year, so this is the last one on the first, on this current year of the cycle. And it involves the remainder of the facilities department. So as you recall, we addressed custodians earlier in the year because they were an employee group that was, we were, the competition for those employees was getting extremely tight, and we wanted to make sure that we were maintaining competition there. But now, we wanted to make sure that we reviewed all of the remaining facilities positions. Facilities Department is a department with a lot of different positions. Sometimes there might be only one or two people in a position, lots of specialty areas, so you see a lot of them listed in the recommendation here. So what we did here to make sure that we do this in a thorough way is, we collect a lot of information to really compare where we fall, not just in relation to our immediate neighbors, but actually throughout all of southeast Wisconsin with other school districts. And then especially in an area like facilities, we're able to analyze our competitiveness amongst the private sector as well, right? Because most of these positions also exist in that market as well. So we did quite a bit of research to see if we are, you know, falling within kind of that average range, which is our target, to ensure that we are competitive for our region. On top of that, we also look at our retention of the employees that we have in these areas, so that helps us, that's also another barometer of whether we are compensating at a competitive level. And based on that, we found that the majority of the positions that we analyzed for today, we don't need to make any adjustments to the starting wages, but there were a few that we wanted to move around. I want to thank Mr. Ross, our facilities director. He helped me as well in, you know, understanding all of the different private sector comparables that we could dig into to figure out where to get the best information, and I think we've come together with a really great scale to use moving forward. So that's the first page of the recommendation, which is really the meat of what we're talking about, these starting wage scales, making sure we're competitive. However, we also want to make sure that we remain loyal to the district's commitment to honoring years of service appropriately, and not allowing someone with less years of experience in the same position to be equal or ahead of someone with more years. So the second page of the recommendation includes a few, a process by which we would ensure that that doesn't take place, that would ensure that we, you know, have appropriately delineated for each year of service a different wage in the affected positions, which as you see, there is only four positions on that second page that really this would apply to. So Mr. Ross was, you know, he worked with me, Mr. Sarno worked with me, and we bring this recommendation forward because, in a manner that we think will help us with some really great long-term recruitment and retention goals in facilities.
Great, questions? Tony? Nope? Sorry, you nodded.
I'm just in favor of what we've, what you've put together. We've had great discussions about this, and I'm in support of it.
I'll move to approve the recommended compensation changes for the facilities department.
Motion in second to approve, this would be administration's recommendation, correct? Motion second to approve administration's recommendation as presented? Any final discussion?
I just have one comment, just to highlight, the whole increase, if I'm reading this right, is 30,765 on an annual basis.
Correct.
Change.
Correct. That's all the cost of the entire adjustment for the entire department of, you know, all these individuals.
So I just wanted to put that in context. As a private sector employee, I just reviewed a department of 12 people, and our annual increase was 65,000. So I'm just putting it in context. This is a much larger department than 12 people, so just putting it in context, I'm in favor of it.
There's 84 people in the facilities department. Takes a lot of people to get our buildings, keep them operating, keep them clean, and keep them ready for kids, so.
I'd like to, one of the things that stood out to me when we were reviewing it was that we are, we want to stay competitive because we want to retain and attract solid employees, and we're not, we're not paying the most, but we're not paying the least either, and that's something that I'm in alignment with. Thank you.
All right. No additional discussion, since there's a motion in second. I will call the motion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any oppose? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have a number of discussion items. So these are items, obviously, for discussion. We will not be taking action on them, but the first is enrollment projections for open enrollment seats. And Superintendent Wimmer, I think you're going to be leading us through that. Is that correct?
Yes, so annually, every January, boards review their projected enrollment. It's kind of the kickoff to budget development. First, determine how many students you project to serve, and then you'll follow with things like staffing, et cetera. And then you're bound to make a formal action. You won't have to do that tonight. That'll come up at the end of our January meeting, on how many seats we're going to make available for open enrollment. I think they had some technical difficulties, Tim was saying with the slide, but you can see it in board docs. It's right under this item, and I'll walk us through, if you want to click on it, those at home, if you want to click on that as well, just the calculations to give an overview. We first start, we kind of back map from what an appeal process would be at that state level if someone were to contest open enrollment seats. So you start with your projected enrollment. One of the great things about West Bend is that we're fairly stable. We look at projected enrollment in multiple ways. We'll use studies from the UW Population Lab that we have existing. We'll use a cohort methodology, which the business office and HR does, where you're looking at just large data sets of numbers and applying different coefficients to look at change over time to different cohorts and things like that. We would know that we're going to have kids re-enter from maybe parochial school at this rate, coming in to take advantage of all the high school opportunities that we have. We know that we have this, so that cohort method looks at that. And then we look at kind of rolling forward and the mobility that we have here. We're, we don't have high mobility, meaning I'm not turning over a lot of families that are in and out our doors. So all of those things help us to make fairly accurate projections this early in a season. We do that conservative, conservatively. This would show a decline. We're projecting a little over 5,700, probably the loss of about maybe 30 students from the year before, just to, again, to be really conservative in that. We look at our preferred classroom size, so you look to policy that gives some ranges, and you would set, you know, for our youngest learners in 4K and kindergarten, that's 20. You're looking at that next range of early learners at 24. These are not like, oh my goodness, the day the 25th kid moves in, I open up a new section. These are ranges for calculations. So just to make that clear, we look at how many sections we would project, you know, that's how many teachers we have. We look at every school and classroom where they fall, and then you would take 85% of that. So even though, like I said, we know we're not fairly mobile, it's allowing you to not over-project open seats so that you're inadvertently inflating your own class size for residents by taking non-residents into your district. It's allowing you to be that conservative at this point when you need to take action so that you're not doing that again. We would still encourage people to apply. There's exception applications, there's all those pieces. We're still a great destination district, but we do have to formalize this, and it allows you to, again, to kind of And it allows you to, again, to kind of back map that so that you're not over-projecting at this point. Last year, we had a lot of discussion around K4 and K5. We made the recommendation last year to keep those unlimited. They're our youngest learners. It might be inciting families to get in here. That housing market is, is really fun to navigate. You know, maybe they, they've identified this is the district where they want to be. They just haven't gotten that, that first house yet, those kinds of things. So we did talk about that last year. It's something I'll kind of check with you to make sure you're, you're doing that. And then we also separately look at caseloads for services in special education. So Emily Melstrand and her full team look at all of the availability and they do multiple methods. So it's not just a number, it's a need and the different services to make sure we can meet those needs. So that's why you'll see that separate number for students who require special education services. So that's kind of the how we calculate. So when we run all of those through, on that next page there, you can see how many regular education seats there would be open, how many special education seats. Again, going through, I would make the recommendation that we have unlimited seats in K4, K5. Those are very small class sizes to get a section going. If we tip over into a new one, you know, I'm fairly confident that we can do that and adjust those. Are there any thoughts on kind of that concept around just those early learners and, and making those unlimited?
I think it's smart to dampen our decline. So I'm in favor of the unlimited K4 and K5.
I would think it's the best time to get them in. I mean, once we get them in and we, you know, if you have to open a section, as you're saying, you know, it's a great time to get them in, show them how great we are, and then keep them for, you know, their entire career.
Absolutely. And they could be starting, you know, perhaps their, as you said, you know, not just identifying as a district where they want to be and moving, but they might be starting with us in K4. Maybe our job, their job is close and, and that's what works for them. So they're looking through open enrollment there. And like you said, then they, they come in and it's, it's, it's a wonderful opportunity. So again, that, that, we would stay consistent with that recommendation. If you look, this is probably the tightest we've ever been because what you see is kind of that cumulative years of declining enrollment. It's, it's finally coming into some classroom packages to be efficient. So while we might've had maybe 40 seats decline over the year, it doesn't come as two neat classroom packages so I can close that out and be efficient. They come kind of all over. So we really did an in-depth analysis around where is that? And, and we, we can be more efficient with those sections. So that's why you see this really tight. Again, we can always kind of look at opportunities through, through other means, but seats really appearing at the fifth grade level, the sixth grade level, and the ninth grade level. And then some nuances of students needing special education services. I just want to call attention to in eighth grade, there's zero regular education seats and one for special education. That one would be null and void because there's none open at the grade level. But we just wanted to show that that caseload, should something happen in that grade level, we, we could serve, so.
Superintendent, going back to 4K and, and, you know, should we do this? I guess I'd look at it and say, we've got a precedent. We had it last year. Do we know, did we have anybody take advantage of it last year?
Sure. For our next discussion, I can get the numbers of exactly what that looks like. I know there were some spots where we had more seats than applicants and some, the other, we, we reviewed some exception applications and worked with partner districts, those kinds of things. So I can get you some, some numbers of that history.
Okay. And, and I'm assuming with you making the recommendation to do the same, this next go around, the challenges we encountered were not significant enough for us to say, oh gosh, we should never do that again.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. We, we with full faith support that recommendation.
Okay. Thank you.
So again, tonight, just going over those calculations, I'll get you that information you're looking for, maybe that historical perspective on numbers of, to our district. But that would be what we'd bring forward for action.
Any other questions? All right. So we'll have some time to digest this and we'll see this at a future, future board meeting. All right. And Superintendent Wimmer, I think you're covering the next agenda item, which is the school year calendar for 2022, 23 and 2023, 24, which is a mouthful.
So it's interesting. This will be the first time that we as a team have had calendar discussions. So I'm seeking a little front-loading and some thoughts and perspective from the board before I convene a committee and, and we start coming up with something wild and the board goes, oh my goodness, no. So first and foremost, I, I just put together some calendars. It's my understanding that past practice has been two-year development at a time?
Yep.
Okay. So I put together those, those two years. I cannot say enough, and I put it right on the top, this is not a district calendar. This is the calendar for the next two years, just so we could have some conversations. The first thing we need to do is take into account an optimal instructional time for our students as learners, and we have some compliance pieces around that. We'll certainly do that. And then learning for our staff as well as some professional work time and learning time. So you don't see any of that. What I've put in here is just, when do those holidays fall that we've traditionally taken off? Again, state statute would say that we can't start before September 1st. So it's just showing you what that start date, and it doesn't even show an end date because then you have to push all those other components like, all right, if this is our start and, and these are our breaks, when do semesters end and, and what does that look like? So when do I have conferences? And when's an optimal time that we're going to give fall assessments so then staff can come together to assess those results after that? Those are all the components. So I just wanted to go kind of those big rocks. I don't see anything that qualifies us to start earlier than our, our start date of September 1. I don't see anything in the calendar that would make me think that I would want to start later than that.
Could we talk about that a second?
Yeah. For it.
So I, you know, being a parent, I always find this to be bizarre that we would bring kids back for two days and then give them a three-day weekend, when in the end, I look at other dates and I think to myself, why in the world would we need off on January 2nd? Why couldn't we come back that day to give us more, you know, to come in later? So, so that's a couple of comments there. I don't like, I, I certainly don't want to go super late into June. So if starting September, what would it be, the 6th would cause that? I don't know. It's only two days. I'm hard pressed to think we can't find two days in there. But as a parent, I think, especially for little kids, that's irritating to come back for two days. For my high schooler, whatever, for me, but I, I would think for smaller, people who have smaller kids, that can be irritating. I also think kids who have jobs, you know, that's an issue. They could get two more days out of work or go on one last family trip for that long weekend. So I, I would question, what is the two days on the front end really gaining for us?
Perfect. So you want us to look at a holistic start that doesn't piecemeal the front end of a student time? Sometimes it's advantageous where you kind of come in, you do the orientation, you do transition pieces in a couple of days. But again, that's looking at a two, three-day spread. You know, maybe the high school's certainly been working on maybe a freshman orientation, those kinds of things. So we can look at and explore those. But looking at what that impact is, knowing that you don't want to go too terribly late into June. Usually you generally see around that second week of June, your sun setting your school year sometime.
I do like the fact that you tagged November 28th and January 2nd in here. I don't know if the intent was to make those, you know, full off days or teacher prep days. But again, we've, we've heard numerous comments of appreciation from teachers in this year's circumstances, again, appreciating that time to allow them to truly enjoy the holiday, the break, and not have to worry about getting back into the swing of things until that day.
So, right. A couple of things. I kept, and again, kind of as I go through this, we'll, we'll get to that piece. I kept the three-day for Thanksgiving. I kept kind of the standard winter break, but I did put that day after. As you said, that's been, one, a disruptive measure. I don't know what the future will bring. I don't know if we'll be on our 27th variant or whatever, but exactly. But it has been a really nice captured workday for our staff to take on. And, and what I always look for is, again, I'm looking for optimal learning calendars first for our kids and our staff as well, but I'm also looking for family-friendly. When you see the extension, it's to a, a weekend, a break. I'm going to tag in professional days to a Monday, Friday so that it's family-friendly. Too often I've seen districts go to a random Wednesday, you leave early. Like I can't, one, it's not optimal for teachers to be learning after, you know, almost a full day's work and then all of a sudden have to pivot to that. It's not optimal for them if your intent is professional development. And it's certainly not optimal for families. So again, tagging some of those natural days into, especially times when our families are perhaps traveling are meaningful. So if everyone's okay with that shift, I did take that on, but I did want to call that out. So thank you, Paul, specifically.
Do you have teacher in-service days in here?
Nope. Not at all.
Okay.
We, we have to plug all those in, but I wanted to get kind of, what are my fence posts that we can run within when I convene a group to, to get creative around it?
I know, I think it was last year, we heard from staff having just week after week after week with no break. And so I, I know you haven't plugged in.
Yep. They're not here yet.
But sometime between September and Thanksgiving, you can't go 11 weeks without a teacher in-service day, so.
No. Generally, you're looking at like once a month to have those so that there's something consistent that they can count on to recapture some planning time and work time in addition to professional learning time. So that, that's there. Like you said, kind of a, a swing day to, to, to pick that up, a, a natural extension of a break. Fall, that October puts you positioned perfectly to be looking at fall data assessments and, and for them to use that for planning. So again, we would put those in at optimal times and make that recommendation, but it's generally once a month and we look at what other breaks are there to not overload and not, sometimes you see schedules where it's like, oh yeah, we're off this week and then we're off that following week. You know, we try not to, to be disruptive.
On, on that specific point, so for 22, 23, it looks like Easter falls on April 9th?
For, let me look at the 22, 23. Correct.
So rather than having spring break, that last week of March, come back for four days and then you get Good Friday, do we have any latitude on moving spring break to maybe the week of March 20th or because of athletics and so forth? Is that one much harder to?
I thought we committed to the last week of March a year or two ago.
Did we?
Right. So while we have local control around calendar development, everyone in the region looked for a consistent time in the last week of March to line up, not just athletics, but also it gave families a consistent opportunity for that travel. Sometimes it, they're almost grateful sometimes when it falls away from Easter because you do get opportunity to travel, maybe family vacation, in addition to maybe I have to go to grandma and grandpa's for, for Easter kind of thing. So we're in attention to that Good Friday. I can get for you for that next discussion, everyone in the region, because we've been looking at these and saying, well, this one falls funny and what are you doing? And everyone's kind of holding. But I'll get you the list of districts who are holding so you can see that. And again, then you're positioning yourselves if you're, you know, perhaps you have students and they're working in another educational setting next door. You've got kids off on one time and family off on another and, and, and things of that nature. So again, that was a pretty regional commitment around last week in March. I don't know anyone who's deviating from that. So that's a cautionary piece. But again, maybe that's something that we look at. I always generally tried to make maybe that Monday returning from Easter when it's split like that. Maybe that's a staff day, again, to give families perhaps another day of travel, that kind of thing. It, it might make sense in that calendar.
I like everything that's been said so far. And I'm noticing that this would be the first time we've ever had no school for MLK Junior Day, which I think is fantastic. Normally it's a teacher in-service day, so the students don't have school, but in this case, it looks like the teachers would be off as well. Is that correct?
I don't know. We'll look at that and talk with the team around that, but right now that's generally an off day. Or sometimes they might make a, a teacher in-service day. So I think it varies.
I think a lot, we've, we've had a lot of, in past years, around February, we have a lot of community participation with people wondering why we don't have it off for everyone. And I think, I would love if we can work it out so that we can, we can do that.
Perfect. That's exactly the type of feedback we're looking for as we develop. We do have this year off. MLK, yeah. Jan, this coming Monday is MLK Day. Not for staff, though. But that's what, that's what Toni's talking about, a full teacher in-service.
So the students get it off, but not everyone.
Oh, I see. Sorry. Yeah. Any similar thoughts from the board on that? Again, trying to be in attention to that, as you said, a full day off for everyone in the system. Any thoughts on President's Day? That's usually maybe an optimal time for staff in service. Is there any thought around that? Okay. All right.
I know a lot of schools on like the East Coast, they're always have President's Day off. And that's almost like spring break, you know?
Light.
Light. Yeah. Well, I'm glad we don't do that. That's just not our culture in the Midwest.
Yeah. We can look at that as an off day for students. Maybe it aligns with some families who are off. I think it's the banking industry that mostly is still up on that day. Yeah. So we'll look at those. So again, I'll look at some of those comparables as we're all kind of engaged in conversation right now around calendars. I'll get you some of that. I, I generally, and I, I put it out to all staff today, like everyone take a look at these calendars. And again, these aren't the district calendar. They're just for discussion, you know, to give input at that school level. And then we'll certainly convene a committee to kind of talk through and think about all those different perspectives in a calendar and bring forward a proposal. So we'll do several rounds of feedback, not just an individual committee or representatives, but I like to kind of put that out to get everyone thinking about it, get some ideas, maybe a committee represents those ideas and, and we run some tests and modeling for people to look at and give some more feedback. So I'll make sure and, and do that.
So since it's posted publicly, if parents take a look at this and have input, how would we direct that? Should we direct them to their school?
Send it right to me?
To you?
Yeah. They can send it right to me.
So I'm looking at 23, 24. You know, I, I appreciate Nancy's comment about the, the first two days of the school and, you know, coming and then you, you go off. But I, I also appreciate the, the, I'll say limited value add, the orientation. It's, it's like coming into a new job, the first day is just paperwork type of thing. But looking at 23, 24, September 1st is a Friday.
It's a Friday. Right? We were all looking at that.
Let's not do that.
Like, what on earth are we doing?
Yeah. I, I would say we start Tuesday, September 5th in, in 23.
I think that's general consensus in calendar development around the area as well.
I guess my last piece would just be when we're looking at making our board meeting calendar, that we're making sure that, I would hate for staff to have to come in for a board meeting if it's a Monday that we have off.
Sure.
So I would just like to, you know, I would like staff to actually enjoy their Monday off as well rather than have to be here for a board meeting.
Well, what's nice is we'll have this set in plenty of time. We generally make our board calendars in April, so we appreciate that, the opportunity as well. So we'll, we'll make sure we adjust to that. Again, if you think of anything, just give me some feedback as we kind of start thinking about the next couple of years ahead. I appreciate it.
Right. Thank you for that. Our next discussion item is capital projects and budget. Mr. Dave Ross is going to be joining us. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. Well, it's January and it's time to look at the project list for this coming summer. This year, we, our, our process was a little different. And typically in the past, I've basically taken my laundry list of projects and picked some things off that list and that were, you know, really rising to the top that needed to be done right away. This year, we developed a process that allowed buildings to request certain projects. So you'll notice on the list that there's a couple of, of projects in there that were requested by buildings. by buildings. It was a new process, so there was some hesitancy and people, you know, kind of stumbled through it a little bit because it's through our facility software, but we did get a number of requests. And so, again, it's moving forward, trying to get some input for what really makes a good project and what's going to enhance the educational environment within the district. It was really kind of nice to hear the comments about the Nifty Nibble because that was a last year's project that I think turned out really nice. But unfortunately, this year's looks more like a catch-up year. There are not too many projects on this list that people would get really excited about other than me. So, if anybody has any questions on the project list, again, we've moved the capital budget, increased it by 4% over last year, so we're up to $1.725 million. But to Nancy's comment earlier, when we were looking at the audit, he asked a question about the value of the buildings. So, I did a quick, I did.
They're good at audience math, right?
Audience math is great, yeah, because I can use the smartphone. But if we looked at the building and said replacement cost, $250 a square foot, the replacement cost for the district would be about $300 million.
So, I was happy with that. That was pretty good, you know, it's not a blush.
Yeah, yeah, so. So, when you look at the value of the buildings, spending 1.75 or $2.5 million is.
Embarrassing.
It's pretty small.
So, speaking of that, so the conversations that Dave and I have are, well, this is the budget that you're given. And Dave is masterful at highlighting the highest priorities while we're still getting, you know, things like the Jackson Library or Nifty Nibble and things like that. But there's been some things deferred that certainly if he had an open checkbook, he would not. So, while we've been putting this money in and it goes up, you know, we really took a hard look at, show me the price tag for the things that you've kicked the can down the road or you're deferring and what does that look like? And that price tag is more in a range of $5 million in those pieces because a lot of times you see districts and they have to, they have to go to referendum to break a cycle of that where we continue to defer maintenance. At some point, we've got to have a hard conversation around pushing and infusing some of those dollars, as Andy was speaking to, out of those other funds, around pushing that in to tackle the deferred maintenance. We want to be good stewards of the dollars, yes, but you don't want buildings falling down around your ears. You don't want to be doing things like that. So, again, looking at and talking through that. So, I told Dave, I'm like, oh, I won't be bashful about saying, you know, that real number so that we can have some discussions around that. And he has that plan in those pieces that would be priority that were deferred and kind of the why. And like you said, there's things that are hidden, right? It's not like you get something new and it's pretty and we can all look at. It's, you know, HVAC systems behind, it's roofing, it's pieces of that, being in attention to cycles of replacement, carpet, you know, if you're at the high school, I think, you know, every kid can point to, like, really, is this seen together like this? You know, things of that nature that are aesthetic, but there's a lot of high needs projects. So, I wanted to make sure that he felt comfortable in having that conversation and not just working within the means that he does so well.
Thank you. You know, I guess when I look at this list, this list doesn't do anything to make things better. This thing, this list keeps things as they are. And, you know, the projects that we've done over the last few years, whether it's the library at the high school, the Nifty Nibble, the Jackson Library, I think that's benefited students. And, boy, I'd really love to do some more of those. So, you know, as we go forward, maybe we can have those discussions about Fund 41 and 46. And what's a project that we could take on that if we ever do get to the point of referendums or whatever, that's going to be there, that's not going to be touched, that is going to be an asset to the building for the next 30, 40 years. So, as Jen said, you know, we've been kicking the can down the road a little bit. So, that is why I included the projected preliminary budget for 2324. And there's $5 million worth of, just over $5 million worth of projects there that are going to be showing up. And again, we'll be deferring some for next year and moving on down the road. What I think is really important to really kind of wrap your heads around is just the size of this district. So, for example, if we're going to do roofing and be in a 20-year roofing cycle, we're going to be spending about $600,000 a year on roofing. If I'm going to paint the district and keep up with the painting, I had $75,000 in there next year. That puts us on about a 20-year cycle for painting. So, again, that just kind of helps you wrap your head around the costs involved and just the sheer size of this district. So, I wanted to make sure that that was out there. But all that fun stuff being said, does anybody have any questions about the list, the project list that I put before you tonight?
So, which one are we looking at first, Dave?
The 2223.
Okay. Lot of roofing.
I like your attitude of doing the maintenance that has to be done first and hoping for projects that can really make an impact for students. I can't help but look at the Jackson roofing and the price tag for that. And it has to be done. I'm not saying, I'm not about to say it shouldn't. I just, this is exactly what we were talking about, why, you know, we're going to still be spending money on this building that we wouldn't have to because it's as old as it is. So, it needs to be done, but I just can't help but feel remorseful that we weren't able to build that new school yet.
Well, I think there's a lot in the 2324 that I think is hinging on a much wider conversation. I mean, you get Fair Park in here and we've got to start that community facilities discussion around what does the future look like? Because if we just run ahead and do this, well, then we've already set, we've charted a course, set off on a course, and that's B and we got to do A first.
Right.
So, I think that's why you see Dave stretching that out, living within our means this year and stretching out the future so it gives us time. We're committed to right sizing the district. You can see the efficiencies as we start looking at open enrollment and compacting down seats and making sure that we're using our space efficiently, effectively. It calls into question this building and our ability to create space in other places. It calls into question almost every building. You want to operate at a certain efficiency in those buildings. You know, certainly the early learning center, those pieces. It calls into question the disrepair of a building we have and what that ongoing cost would be and when you kind of cut that and move on. So, we are committed to starting those conversations and they're going to be hard, especially when you start talking with a community about potential closures of schools. It gets really scary. And it's also affirmation that families love their school. So, I always try and look at, again, positioning us to look at buildings that don't have students in them, such as this, around our own relocation or, you know, our 4K Center where they're only in and out for a half day and how to use our schools that are nested in neighborhoods a little bit different. I think those are different ways to look at some of those facilities to help us right size. But that's a commitment that we have to make change.
Well, I think for some of those things, I mean, it's, you know, if I purchase a property and I'm going to live in it or I'm going to use it for a business and I make an upgrade, you know, that's obviously an investment that I hope to see a return from. I mean, you know, we're talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars that we're not going to see a return if, you know, we know these buildings are in disrepair. So, it's really like, sorry, but it's like flushing your money right down the drain. And, you know, we can all discuss how financially conservative we are in this community, but in the end, it's like burning your dollars right in front of you, for heaven's sakes. I mean, that's basically what we're doing. Like, hey, let's go throw, you know, brand-new tires on a car that the engine doesn't work anymore. Well, that's pretty stupid. You know, fix the engine or just junk the whole car. So, I mean, I'm sorry, but I'm just irritated by the whole thing because it is a waste of money. So, this idea that we're going to save tons of dollars by not increasing taxes is really a big giant joke because this is not saving dollars. This is wasting money right here on projects that, I understand they need to be done and I'm not suggesting that at all. I'm suggesting we're just throwing our good money at bad projects at this point. Where if we had a new school, we could have a healthy maintenance plan that makes sense so that 20 years from now, the people sitting up here aren't having the same conversation. So, as a school board member, I'm beyond irritated that people don't bother to take the time to understand the entire process and understand exactly what we're talking about and just will make a rash decision or, you know, run around town talking nonsense when they don't understand the process. So, I look forward to the community conversations and I hope that you're able to educate the people who don't seem to understand that, you know, again, putting brand-new tires on something like a vehicle where the engine doesn't work or the motor doesn't work or whatever is a waste of money.
And I think that's our obligation as a system, as you said, to inform, make sure they have that information that they need, in having even the discussion in sharing their feedback, their opinions. And, again, we take that really seriously. I think we're coming at community conversations in a completely different way to educate and to seek perspective from people so that we can create a lasting plan that, again, is in attention to those things.
And this spreadsheet helps us do that. So, I'm, you've done a wonderful job, Dave. And every, I think Nancy would agree with me, what we're saying has nothing to do with what you've done here.
No, I totally get it.
And I just want to put a little more context on Nancy's points for those watching at home, that on the 2324 proposed request spreadsheet, specific to Jackson Elementary, we're looking at $1.141 million. And as you said, Dave, that's stuff above the ceiling, in the walls, that's not necessarily, yes, it makes it better for the students, but it's not like the new library. And I'm assuming there'd probably be another sizable chunk of money needed for Jackson right relatively soon behind that. And that still doesn't do anything to fix the geographic location and all the other challenges with the site.
Right. This is a status quo project.
Just keep the building open and safe.
Yes.
And I'll hit you more with more next year. Thank you.
I know we're supposed to be looking at the proposed one, but it's hard not to look at the preliminary one. And there's nothing glamorous on there. This is literally trying not to keep the roofs from falling down into the schools. And it's totaling $5 million, almost 3 million of that is roofs. And 1 million is money just towards Jackson. So, this is, there's not fancy things on here. This is keeping our roof on our buildings and our walls standing. So, I, yeah, we're definitely going to have to continue these conversations.
You know, there's a couple of projects on the 2223 list that I really want to keep going, and that is starting to do some lighting retrofits. It's easy, easy money. And we, we're so far behind. I have more T-12 light fixtures in this district than I care to admit. It's getting to the point where it's hard to even buy T-12 fixtures anymore because they're really not being made in this country anymore. So, I think the more that we can do, the more we can save on the energy side of things and hopefully reinvest those dollars into more of those kind of projects so that we can really get a handle on some of our, even our operating costs.
Dave, specific to that, is any of that eligible for any focus on energy?
It absolutely is.
Okay. And is that netted in here? So, like, lighting retrofits, line 17 and 18, so let's take a look at the corridor lighting of 17. Is that net FOE funding or?
No, it is not.
Okay.
That's my contingency on the project.
Well, and the other piece that, you know, LED lighting isn't that new anymore, so folks have them at home and you know how long they last, but on the maintenance end, you know, our facilities folks aren't getting the lift out and having to go up in the gym and replace ballasts and so forth. So, it's a huge saver.
Does $30,000 to do the retrofit of the fieldhouse, does that do a nice job?
Does a really nice job.
Because my kid plays a lot of basketball and when I go to a gym that is poorly lit, it is, it's terrible. So, our gym now, I think, is nice and bright, but it's obviously not LED and up to date. So, I want to make sure we aren't, let's make sure we do it right.
It will have the appropriate foot candles for the space.
Good.
How about when you're sitting on those bleachers? Do you like nice, comfortable bleachers or do you like some old rickety ones? Because I think we've got some old rickety ones here, I'm just thinking.
That's on the next list.
That's called home court advantage, like.
No, not the pile on. I'm looking at that one right now, Nancy. And I've been on that one for 20 years since I've been sitting in those bleachers. And I see actually even elderly people, grandpas and grandmas want to come and see their kids. And I think our bleachers prevent that from happening. And it's really a community spot. How many times do we hold community events there? And it's open to the community. So, we have to start investing in those, especially being a low-spending district and saving money. We got to start investing in the right things and it's great we're having the community conversations, but I couldn't agree with you more, Nancy, and it's nice to see some of those.
Yeah, and I think when you talk about spending smart dollars, right, one of the things that Dave did is specifically around making the bleachers accessible, changing the railings, making step-ups, those things were in progress. But when we look at, we eventually want to have a whole overhaul of the fieldhouse. So, you don't want to start touching things that you have to when you overhaul it, redo it and all of that. So, you know, that's why he's strategically putting those upgrades where he is so that if you, you know, do a more complex fit, you're not undoing dollars in time that you already spent.
And just one more comment about community. I love that the school district contributed $100,000 to Carl Cuss Field. It's a $1.3 million facility. Now, that's a gem. There's going to be people coming in to use that field from the community and the whole Washington County. So, I just want to even state that. It's not part of this project list. I know it was committed funds from a while ago, but we're finally going to see it open in a baseball game there, actually, maybe in two months, knock on wood.
Yeah, looks good.
Two months? Two months?
Three months.
There's going to be a couple of pieces of snow on there.
You're going to Florida for that game.
For me, the 2223, the 1.725 looks good. And I like your process of opening it up for other people to request some things and it's nice to see that some of those are approved. Obviously, the 2324 is a whole nother discussion, but what's in front of us for action at our next meeting, I assume, looks good to me.
Right. All right. Any final questions or discussion? Otherwise, we'll see this as an action item on a future agenda, correct?
Yes, you will.
All right. Thank you very much for your work.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, and that takes us to technology projects and budget. And Mr. Tim Harder is joining us. Good evening.
Good evening, board members. So, normally, I give this presentation in March. When I started in my role eight years ago, we had this conversation in May. And so, this year, we're going to have it in January. In my world of technology, we continue to see issues related to sourcing both parts, network equipment, you name it. And in some cases, we're seeing eight-to-10-month lead times on certain types of things. We're already starting to hear interesting conversations about availability of end-user devices as most businesses will take the higher-end models and the more expensive items and sell them off before they build Chromebooks and lower-end laptops, which we may use in education and so forth at that point in time. So, in front of you this evening, I have a proposed project list for you as we go into the school year. It's really broken down into three different categories or areas. And so, the first being that network infrastructure and security piece. Over my eight years, that last word of security has changed immensely in the world of IT. There are times where I've had to make the Saturday night phone call at 8:00 to Jen and say, hey, just an FYI, this is what's happened in the world of technology right now. We have a team on it, you know, we're working on it, we'll work on it through the weekend and so forth. And so, that has changed immensely. We also continue to put strain on our network as we increase the number of devices, the amount of traffic that flows on our network. As we've been now, you know, one-to-one for our students here, it's not just those Chromebooks and our staff devices, it's the public who comes in and uses our network. It's our students and staff who connect their own personal devices to our network and so forth. So, underneath our proposed project area in that area, we really have some heavy network pieces related around equipment and the need to serve up services and internet access to our end users. The first one being on there is replacing about half of our edge network switching. So, that's all the network switching. That's the last piece of equipment that hit before your computer, your wireless access point, your phone, whatever it might be. And so, we have a little over 80 of those edge network switches in the district. We'll replace half of those at this cycle. Those products are E-Rate eligible. So, just as a reminder, E-Rate is a federal program where we can ask for reimbursement on certain, what they call category two hardware projects. And so, networking being one of them. So, we go out to a larger federal bid process and then, once that's done, we can actually recoup some of those costs based upon what we actually go out for. And so, we go out for new switches that also provide us some additional security features and management features that go with that. We're also in the process of looking at adding additional network switching as our actual port count across the district goes up, as you'll see later on in the presentation, as we put more and more types of things on our network that are wired, that aren't wireless, we're just running out of ports in certain areas, so we'll need more network switching. The second item on there is NAC or a Network Access Control System. So, this is an upgrade for us with additional security features, logging features, an ability for us to. for us to go down to the individual device. So when it is joined to our network, it gets rule-bound on what it can and cannot access. It also prevents somebody from unplugging something and plugging something in and gaining access to a different part of the network and so forth. So this is an upgrade to a system that we currently have that provides a lot more features around those security pieces and allows us to manage that across all of our buildings. Many of these systems are multi-year pieces. So you'll see that initial cost of implementation that'll cover, in this case, a four- or five-year period of that software and that process. We'll continue to increase our security logging pieces. That has become more and more evident over the last six months as we continue to see threats here. You see cybersecurity incidents. What was a month ago, we were dealing with the whole Java logging issue that hit out there. So that was a nice, long weekend for many IT people. And so we'll continue to upgrade that and make sure that we have the bandwidth and the capability to log all of those little details that help in the event that there is an event that we have to respond to. The next item on the list is an increase in a replacement of some servers. So when COVID happened to us and we shut down, it was great that we had Chromebooks to hand out to all of our kids here. But we know as our students get to that 7th through 12th range in CT and business ed, they're still accessing items that are on Windows laptops that our kids don't have access to at home. That could be Autodesk, that could be computer software for programming and so forth in business ed. And so we implemented a process and a program and software where students can basically remote in through a website and access their computer or access a server where that software is served up to them. We want to, as an IT department, expand that opportunity for our kids. It's turned into, hey, I can just work on my homework at home. Or I was out two days being sick and I need to make up that time. I'm not asking Mrs. Schmidt to sit here for three hours after school so I can work in the lab. At the same time, we're reducing the number of Windows devices that our students have to have access to at the high school because they'll be able to serve that up on their Chromebook by going to a web browser and logging into that point in time. And so it provides flexibility across the building. It gives those students basically 24/7 access to do that in a virtual or a VDI type of environment. And so that's something that was fast-tracked due to COVID in that access. We have some networking wiring, so we have a much larger need. So as Dave talks about the building and the pretty things behind the walls and the not pretty things behind the walls, I have some not-so-pretty things behind the walls where our network wiring in some of our buildings is to that point where it's aged, it's brittle, we're having to rerun wires and so forth. But this dollar allocated is more for us to get ready for a variety of things externally. And a lot of it has to do with athletics and outdoor events. So working with Andy Sarno in business and our two athletic directors, we're trying to make that switch to, if you're like me, I don't carry cash. So if I come to a football game on a Friday night, I'm either bumming $5 off Jen so I can give my kids some sort of concession, allowing our parents to pay concessions by credit card, pay for your tickets by credit card, and serving that access up across. So this would allow us to gain access to internet connection over at the concession stand baseball soccer field over there. That is a very hard area for us to get to wirelessly based upon the number of trees that exist between there. There's also a house in between there and so forth, along with running some wireless pieces out to our football area for those different types of needs. And then the last item on there for security is really an endpoint detection and antivirus update that we will have as that contract renews to something else. We have our ever-so-popular every year on the second page of end-user devices and management of those devices. So we will rotate our devices out for two reasons. One, they're end-of-life and we have a hard time getting parts and so forth to them. And number two, not being able to upgrade for software and security reasons. So we have approximately 90 staff devices. Most of those are laptops. We are shifting even our office staff to laptops with docking stations and monitors and all of that. We will have some student devices that we will need to rotate out yet up at the high school level. We carry some laptops in our libraries for our students or Project Leadway Labs. Some of those things aren't virtualized yet. The big-ticket item on there is our Chromebooks. So we replace about 1,300 Chromebooks every year. That is for students in grades kindergarten, fifth to ninth is our cycle. And we actually have our first full cycle of students who completed their first one-to-one. So that our fifth grade crew that will, they started in fifth grade, they're eighth graders, they will receive their first new device in that cycle when they come to the high school. People often ask me, what do we do with them? You know, do we just hand them out? Do they just go away? Do you just recycle them? We bulk sell anything and everything that we can. And so we actually currently are prepping about 1,400 old Chromebooks that will go out of here. And we will sell them off and get the highest bid for them through a resale process that we can turn around and use back towards our new devices or other IT equipment needs that we have throughout the year. Those 1,300 cost for those Chromebooks, that's just not the Chromebook itself. That's Chromebook adapter, that's the case. That's the licensing that goes with it. It's the extended warranty that allows us to cover a lot of those different pieces and do some of those repairs here in-house. It's asset tagging and barcoding for us so that we don't have to do that. And then what we call bulk shipping. Everything doesn't come in its own individual box with its own piece of foam. I'd fill up like five dumpsters in two days outside doing all that. That comes bulk shipped for us and ready to go at that point in time. And then there's also a loner pool that's in there because we have to have something on hand when Nancy's device breaks or Tim's device breaks. And so we have a loner pool on there. And so depending upon where that is at. We still offer our families a $10 self-insurance option here. I encourage families to consider taking that. Right now, the going rate for a broken screen on a Chromebook is 180 bucks in some cases. And so for $10, basically, if you don't purposely break it, we cover the cost of that fixing that repair through that process. And so we will continue that process out. And then we're just in the process of needing to upgrade our remote management software as we continue to do as much of our items remote, not just because of COVID, but to be a little more effective and efficient, our time instead of driving around to different buildings, remoting in, doing that in a secure way in that point in time. And then our last page really is around some classroom technology updates. And so we have three categories there. We started this process a couple of years ago. We paused with COVID just to do some, due to some availability of devices and screens. But we'll continue that process of rotating out outdated projectors and smart boards in our system to interactive touchscreen panels. They come with, you know, you have to wire those in. There's electrical, there's network wiring. There's also the increased port count for the network switches. But in terms of a management piece for us, there's no bulbs to replace. We can remote manage them through a management software. And it provides us some additional features to an aging smartboard fleet that in some cases have been here for 10-plus years at that point in time. We are expanding the use of a product called ClassLink from grades kindergarten and first grade. It's a dashboard where those kids log in because they don't have a true LMS until they hit fifth grade. It's a dashboard where all you see is all the little different apps. It's almost like open up your phone and seeing all your apps on your phone. Gives the kids the ability to click on it. It passes that login information right over to that system automatically so the student doesn't have to log in again. And so we're going to expand that to grades two through four. It also gives us some great analytics on what we're using and how often it's being used. So we can say we purchased this product or, you know, Joel says he needs this app. And then we go back and find out that Joel's kids really only used it five times throughout the whole year. And so we'll look to expand that through grades two through four. And then as our staff become more and more mobile and there's more and more things going on between distance learning, as we look at some options for our filtering software and teachers to be able to see what kids are doing on their Chromebooks while they're in their classroom, we're looking to standardize our classroom technology setup. And so right now, you go in and I got to plug my charger in and then I got to plug into my presentation if that's a screen or if that's a projector, basically a docking station with a monitor. And we'll standardize that across the district. Also immensely helps with our subs who come into the classroom. And so they're used to the same setup in every single place, charges the laptop and so forth. And so we'll start to deploy that across the system to create that standardization. It also helps us in the sense that we don't have staff asking for extra adapters and so forth. They can keep that adapter for their mobile pieces. We have less need for all these different dongles to go from HDMI to VGA to USB-C, which those are 30, 40-some dollars each time we replace those because they're small and they tend to get lost. It's literally one plug-in with your laptop. So Jen and I use them, a bunch of us do in this building. Some of our staff already do at the high school. And so those are our proposed projects as we go into summer. This doesn't take out our normal budget of, you know, things like internet and our website and all those other different software pieces. We continue to be busy. From July 1 until yesterday, we've served a little over 3,900 support requests in a six-month period. That does not include just our day-to-day stuff. That's literally somebody who puts in a ticket and asks for help at that point in time. And so this will help us be more effective and efficient. Any questions?
Looks good. So what's the going rate on a bulk sale of Chromebooks?
I don't know. We haven't gotten quite that far.
$10 a unit?
If we're lucky, depending upon what it is. So as soon as they end-of-life a device, that tends to draw the dollar down a lot. But if you can find the right model that people are still using, that screen and that motherboard are the two biggest pieces. Of course, we don't get what they turn around and sell it back to somebody else. But so, yeah.
Get something.
Tim, I appreciate the work. I'm supportive of this. I like the balance between here's the stuff we need to kind of keep the house running and here's the stuff that students actually lay their hands on, which is great. Just out of curiosity, longer term, there's a lot of discussion in the industry about virtualization and outsourcing. We still need to have, you know, a device that kids can access. Can you talk a little bit about, is that something that's part of the long-term strategy? Or maybe that doesn't make sense for educational institutions that we're giving up, you know, data to a third-party provider? Can you comment on that?
You bet. So you see some of that virtualization in the end-user device of what we're doing with the whole virtualization of those Windows machines there. You know, it's a balance. When it's here on-site, I can control it. It's not even about the data. But we've also had some massive issues this year between Amazon and some other big web hosting where it looks like the internet's down to us. So Canvas is down. Google may be having an issue. You know, McGraw-Hill or Savvas or, you know, Amplify. And there's nothing we can contribute but literally respond to your email, Chris, that says, yep, it's not our problem and we've made them aware of it. And so we host some of our major systems on campus due to the size and the cost, like Skyward and some of those things. Our servers are virtualized, so we work within a server farm here. So we have one at our high school facility and then at one of our elementaries as a backup piece at that point in time. There's less hosting. Now it's more about serving that up. So as we look at new curricular products, we were talking a little about this at Curriculum Committee today, is that we will always look for that online piece. We also have some paper copies of things. But there is that robust need for that serving up that webpage. You know, most of, when I moved over here eight years ago, a lot of those resources would be hitting a server internally here and hosted here. So when we used to do, you know, map testing and NWA testing years ago, that was held on-site. Well, now when we do STAR, that goes out there. When you do work with those third-party vendors offsite, then it gets into your data privacy, your responses, all those different types of pieces. So there's some hit and miss to it, but the industry is definitely going to a lot of them hosting software as a service. And then we're reacting to providing that legit, high-quality access that we see here every day.
Any questions? Go ahead.
No, I just wanted to say, for a technology geek, you're a great communicator. I appreciate the...
Are you the geek or she the geek?
By far. I'm even going to have my wife watch this part where you called me. That's all right. Yeah. Tim, just thank you for what you do. We're lucky to have you in our district. And thank you for plain speak and communicating to us what this all means.
Yep. That's what we're here for.
Any other questions? Thank you. So we'll see this as an action item as well.
Thank you.
Next time. Thank you. All right. And our last action item, K-8 literacy. And Mrs. Laura Jackson is here to walk us through that.
Clarification, no action.
Oh, I'm sorry. I meant discussion. Thank you for the clarification. Sorry, Ms. Jackson.
Good evening. I also have Heidi Spingola here who, and she does have to leave shortly, so she might leave during our conversation. But Heidi, would you come on up and join me, please? So we spoke at our December, both Curriculum Committee meeting and our Board meeting about K-8 literacy instruction. And so I'm going to just review a few things from that meeting and then go into some of our next steps. So if you recall, in the 2019 school year, we began utilizing the partnership and comprehensive literacy and talked about our implementation of that. We presented the Board with a three-year implementation plan. And then we launched that in the 2020 school year. And as you know, we were beginning our first year in the 2020 school year. We went into the shutdown period of COVID when we were not, were not meeting together at all and everything went virtual. So when we came, and shortly before that shutdown or near that shutdown, we had looked at year one was going to wrap up this way. Then our year-two plan was presented. Well, of course, we ended up modifying that year-two plan for implementation in the '21 school year. We did continue with our phonics instruction changes, and we called that word study. But we altered some of the other trainings that we are going to be doing in areas of focus. Then last June, again, we came to you and modified the plan for year three, which is right now. So we're in year three of the implementation plan. And at the end of this year, we'll again be revising and telling you where we'll be headed forward once we accomplish and we finish through this school year. Within that implementation, each year, we review the actions that have been taken, any delays that occurred, and the outcomes that we reached. And then we talk about what's next. So within the implementation of the partnership and comprehensive literacy, one of the key pieces of the framework, now remember that the framework has 10 components. One piece of that literacy framework is called the Framework for Instruction. That Framework for Instruction is Language Workshop, which is, talks about how instruction is delivered. Then we have the Reading Workshop component of that, Writing Workshop, and the Content Workshop. The components that you see before you on your screen are all part of that Framework for Literacy Instruction. Additionally, part of the model is the coaching and mentoring, the model classrooms, the standards that we work with, the comprehensive assessment system, the interventions, the collaborative learning that occurs with the adults involved, the literacy plan as we talked about, the fact that your technology and your research is embedded into the work that you're doing. And then you spotlight or show what you've learned along the way and what you're doing. Our focus for today is that Framework for Instruction. I just really want to reiterate that, that Language Workshop, that focus, that Framework for Instruction and Literacy that you see before you. We had previously shared that our grade-level teachers, representatives from each building, along with our literacy specialists from across the system, and Heidi, our district literacy specialist, and our instructional coaches all met together and collaborated on working on units of study. We then brought forward some resources to support the classroom instruction. And those resources are the Reading Mini Lessons from Fontis and Pennell. And those Reading Mini Lessons serve students in grades K through six. The Writing Mini Lessons from Fontis and Pennell, which serve students currently in grades K through one. The Reading Strategies Book from Jennifer Saravalo, and that would serve students in grades seven and eight. And the Writing Strategies Book from Saravalo, which would serve students in grades two through eight. These resources, the Curriculum Committee looked at in December. And then they've been on display at the public library for the public to review. They've been here at the ESC. Dr. Jill Reese has hosted Saturday events in order to have the public access those resources and be able to provide some feedback and some information for us on how they're viewed by our other stakeholders. So that information, we have to date, two responses that have been submitted, and that is linked in the Board docs document. We did have others who came in to review. More than two individuals came in to review it, but they did not submit feedback on the resource. And Dr. Jill did go in to take a look at that again today to make sure that that was updated. And this is what is accurate as far as resources that were reviewed. So these texts that are currently still at the public library and will remain there through the week are what we're looking at bringing forward to you for discussion or for action next meeting on January 24. If you would like to review those as well, you're also welcome to do so. I think that you could contact Dr. Jill or Heidi Spingola would make them available to you. But in, at the January 24 meeting, these are the resources that we would be bringing forward for Board action. Additionally, we are looking at some additional supports for our teachers and our students, oh, I'm sorry, this is the updated timeline, for that review. So December Curriculum Committee had looked at it, they've been out there for feedback and public viewing. We talked about it at the School Board last time. Curriculum Committee looked at it again today, we're having the discussion, and then potential action on January 24. So once again, the timeline listed, but in a different linear format for you. The next item on the list is, so what are those next steps? What are we going to be talking about with you in regards to K-8 literacy next? And so there are some additional supports that will be looked at for K-8 literacy, and these involve interactive read-alouds for our elementary students. They involve writing units of study and reading units of study, and additional resources for those classrooms. We are also looking at having some Spanish texts available to the students so that our Spanish-speaking students can also read in their first language. So I'm going to highlight the resources, and I'm going to give Heidi a minute to speak about them. The resources we're talking about for the interactive read-alouds and the writing units of study are all images on here on this slide, and the links that are listed actually list the book titles for the interactive read-alouds, and those will then be available for public review again before coming to action. Heidi, do you want to speak about these resources for a minute?
I think the key thing to know about these resources is they align with the previously adapted Word Study curriculum that was adopted about a year and a half ago. So we're helping to create a systematic process for our teachers to use for their tier-one instruction by having all those components of literacy aligned. So our reading curriculum would be aligned with our writing curriculum, which would be aligned with our Word Study curriculum. So really providing the best system for our students that we can with overall alignment across and within the grade levels.
I see on the list it refers to trade packs or trade books. What does that mean? Can you explain that?
So when you think of a trade pack, a trade books, are books you might go to the library and check out and read to a child or purchase from a bookstore. We talked about the Little Red Hen and different versions of that during the Curriculum Committee meeting. So they are books that, again, are readily accessible out there. They are fiction and nonfiction, and some of them are complex texts, ideally they're all compelling texts. What else would you like to say about trade books?
For these specific trade books, most units have one or two titles identified that would be partnered with those units. So there'd be one or two trade titles per unit that are identified.
Thank you.
Are there any questions at this time?
Any questions from the Board? Paul?
To the slide. So the additional supports on Slide 8, how soon, I'm assuming that's going to come back for the Board, in front of the Board for discussion, go through curriculum as well? So that's, has that started yet, or is that process just beginning?
We have, we are securing those resources so that people can have their hands on them at this time, and so we're working on that. As Mr. Harder referred to, they're, they're, some things are taking a little longer to come in than others.
Okay. So in terms of tentative Board action, this is not something that's coming up?
In January, no.
Or even April, May?
Maybe, April, May.
Maybe, okay.
Because the Curriculum, if they're here, Curriculum Committee will look at them in February.
Okay, thank you.
I remember the excitement for this when it was first started, and it seemed like so long ago, so it's nice to see that it's finally, you know, coming in front of the Board and ready to go. And community feedback was positive, the two comments I read, I believe. I read those this morning. And so appreciate the follow-through and the process being followed, and look forward to getting these in teachers' hands soon.
I think the public's going to be really excited about the recognizable nature of the supplementary books. For example, The Tortoise and the Hare, The Wheels on the Bus, The Itsy Bitsy Spider, The Little Red Hen, my personal favorite. I think that's really important for parents sitting with their child and connecting over something that they're passing down. So, and of course, there's new titles too, but I think that's really special, and that's something that demonstrates we're not trying to reinvent anything, we're, you know, we're sticking to the basics and what's proven to work. So thank you, I appreciate that.
Any other questions? Right, this is a discussion item. We'll see this on the agenda as you scheduled here on January 24, Superintendent.
Just saying, sorry that Dr. Reese couldn't be with us tonight to talk about this. If you want to just show that one slide and that timeline again, making sure that we have that connection between the PCL framework, but that doesn't actually give us the curriculum and the units of instruction in those pieces, these lesson books that you show, some of those will be in place. They will be coming forward for that review again and potential action in January. So there's some, I think, that Laura's thinking of that are in production that are in line, some other grade levels, and those might be future casts, but I want to make sure that you do understand you will be seeing these back in front of you.
Specifically, these are the resources that will come before you.
Very good.
In January.
Good clarification, thank you. All right. Thank you for your presentation, we appreciate it. We'll see you at the next meeting. All right, which takes us to future agenda items and our Board meeting calendar, which I had here and lost, so bear with me one moment. There it is. So next, regular Board meetings, January 24, and also then following February 7 will be another regular Board meeting, both 5:30 PM, and both scheduled to take place here at the Education Service Center. As for committee meetings, there's a Curriculum Committee meeting on February 1 at 8:00 AM here at the Education Service Center, and I'm sorry, Mr. Angert, remind me, but we're tentatively scheduled for...
Policy is January 25 at 4:00 right here in this room.
There we go. Any questions on the Board calendar? Hearing none, are there any other items beyond those that we talked about for follow-up and discussion? Hearing none, I would then move to adjourn into executive session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes 19.851(c) to consider employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, and to take such action as necessary, if necessary, based on its discussion, namely, compensation and evaluation. Will there be a second?
Second.
Thank you. Motion and second to adjourn into executive session. Any final discussion? Hearing none, this requires a roll call vote, so I will call the roll. Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Dove?
Yes.
Mr. Rebell?
Yes.
Ms. Weigert votes yes. Ms. Schmidt?
Yes.
Ms. Justman?
Yes.
Mr. Angert?
Yes.
All right. That motion carries. We adjourned into executive session. Thank you for those participating here in the room and at home. We are, we stand adjourned. Thank you.